That's what we need more.
We'll call the meeting to orders, Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2025-16 for August 19th, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer in place of allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom. As it is in heaven, and give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion from the council to approve the consent agenda. Second, motion is second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Consent agenda passed unanimously. Just for the public's attention, Shaney Shields could not be here today and will be absent. She will not be calling in by Zoom, and Councilman Holloway will be here in a few minutes. He's being held up, so we are operating as a quorum with five members, more than enough. First item on the agenda we have is a proclamation to recognize the month of August as Black Philanthropy Month, and we have with us the Black Excellence Community Fund presented by Jeff Merritt. If you're here, you go to the podium, and Jeff will be glad to read that. How's everybody?
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation for Black Philanthropy Month. Whereas August is recognized as Black Philanthropy Month, a time to honor the legacy, leadership, and contributions of Black philanthropists and collective giving models that have strengthened and sustained communities for generations, and whereas Black Philanthropy Month calls attention to the rich tradition of Black generosity expressed through giving circles, family legacies, mutual aid, civic leadership, and community uplift, and whereas the Black Excellence Community Fund, a community foundation of the Eastern Shore Giving Circle, is a shining example of modern Black philanthropy created by and for the community to advance equity, build generational impact, and invest in Black-led and Black-serving organizations. Whereas through grant-making, advocacy, and collaboration, the Black Excellence Community Fund uplifts initiatives that promote education, health, economic mobility, leadership development, and cultural preservation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims August 2025 as Black Philanthropy Month in celebration of the Black Excellence Community Fund, and encourages all residents to recognize, support, and uplift the transformative power of Black philanthropy done this 19th day of August 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council.
So, would you all like to? You first.
Me first. Thank you very, very much for this proclamation. We appreciate it. Every year, there's a theme for Black Philanthropy Month, and this year, the theme is San Kofa Now, and it's Renew, Reclaim, and Rise. So, we really do appreciate the acknowledgement from especially the council, but also the community for our efforts. This is year three. It's come a long way, and I definitely really do appreciate it, so thank you.
You can state your name.
My name, I'm so sorry. My name is Sonia Whitehead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could everyone introduce themselves, so everybody knows who each of you are? These are three important women in this community, individuals.
I'm Sharon Morris, and I'm a co-founder. Sonia didn't say, but she's the visionary behind this fund. We are under the umbrella of the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, and on this Saturday, we will host our third annual event that raises funds so that they can be re-gifted back into the community. To date, we have done 12?
Yes.
We have gifted 12 $500 grants to Black-led organizations in this county.
Great, excellent.
I am Lori Carter. I am also one of the co-founders, and as stated, we do thank you for this opportunity to be able to say that you appreciate what we do. Also, I want to make note that we have increased the fund from $500 to $750. So, we are truly excited, and we're looking forward to working with the actual community in this endeavor. Thank you very much, and I am, I like to note, on my lunch break, as my boss is standing there at the table.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation to recognize the month of August as Academic Preparation Awareness Month, and we have Councilman Josh Hastings. Oh, he's already ready. Good, good. Who's going to read the proclamation at the podium. If you're with this organization, please come up to the podium, and Josh will present it. Good morning.
Thank you all. This is a proclamation for Academic Preparation Awareness Month. Whereas earning a diploma from high school is one of the most cherished things a person can experience in their life, and one of the greatest achievements, and whereas attending school daily and having the support of parents to achieve this goal is the best approach to reduce the dropout rates in our school system and to show children that they are truly cared about and supported, whereas encouraging students to remain in school, to learn, and to help students understand the importance of following direction and honoring rules as life skills, and mentoring students to learn the value of self-respect and the respect for others is essential to their lives, whereas the clearest path for a child to become a productive, responsible citizen is to support encouragement to stay in school. By receiving a high school diploma, the foundation to build a productive life may be realized, but the students will see their dreams come true. So now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims that August 2025 is Academic Preparation Month, and encourages all citizens and parents to inspire children to be successful citizens, done this 19th day of August 2025, signed by the entire county council.
Thank you so much. My name is Minister Glenda Williams Stevens, and on behalf of our Education Chair, NWAACP Education Chair, Dr. Paula, and our entire Education Committee, we want to thank you, thank you, thank you for this proclamation, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Glenda Sinclair, and I am a retired administrator from Wycomico County Public Schools, 43 years, and I love kids, I love seeing our students get back. But on behalf of the NWAACP Education Department, thank you. And Dr. Stauffer will be speaking to the NWAACP on August 28th at 6:30. So we look forward to being able to share and hear how we can work together as a unit to better the schools and our students. Thank you for this proclamation.
I neglected to mention that Bonzo Sager has brought in pairs for the county council. We appreciate that, Bonzo. We need to note that in our, Mr. Benson, we need to note that in our declarations, I guess, as gifts received of high value. Well, it's more than that. It's much more than that. All right. Just wanted to note on the record. Good morning, Mr. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 115-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year 26 capital budget to authorize the county executive to transfer $200,000 from the hurdle building exterior wall project to fund the nursing home generator project. Since the county is no longer going to need to spend $200,000 on repairs for the hurdle building, she is requesting to propose to move those funds to the nursing home generator project, and this will cover the extra cost of upgrading the electrical system so the new generator can power the entire facility. And we have Mr. Peyton Matthews here, if you have any questions.
Good morning, Peyton. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 115-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Joe White. I'm a resident of Parsonsburg. Nothing against doing the generator for the nursing home. I'm sure that's a very necessary topic, but from a broader sense, back in April and May during the budget season, you had work sessions with the executive's finance team about the hurdle building, the funds that you were planning to spend there, most notably going towards the Verizon building. Since then, publicly, we have not heard anything about the proposed $2.75 million that we were going to spend on the Verizon building. I know that was outside of what the council in general was looking to spend, but if we're going to start earmarking $200,000 here or there, the lease with Verizon runs out in October, it would be nice publicly to know what the taxpayers are going to be expected for improvements for the building. That's all.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing for Resolution 115-2025. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 115-2025.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? One question I have, and it would be for you, Pam. I know, and I just, this is a quick one. I don't remember in the last budget schedule. I know we had requested that either with the CIP or with the annual budget, that we have some type of addendum to that establishing. I'm going to consider this to be a restricted fund, once it's been approved, and also, once it's been approved in the CIP, and also for the first year of the budget, the capital expense. Is there an addendum that tracks for that three-year period that shows us what those restricted funds are, and the total amounts, and the projects?
So, this is part, when council adopts the capital budget, they're adopting the ability to take the funds out of the general fund and move it into the capital project fund. So, you'll see that this is going into the 32 fund. That is the capital project fund associated with the pay-go funds that the council has approved. Additionally, we identify what fiscal year these projects were originally started, for the most part, by the first two numbers of the project number. So, the hurdle building money here was identified as being what we thought we were going to do in 2024. Ultimately, in 2024, we made the decision to buy the Verizon building, and thus, this money was set aside but not used for hurdle because we made the decision to buy Verizon. We are going to be providing to council during this upcoming CIP, we are doing a holistic look at everything that is in our 32 fund, and what projects are completed, what projects need to be, where we stand on every project. It doesn't make fiscal, it doesn't make sense to add it to the CIP because that would make it an incredibly long document, but we are, in this process, going to be identifying projects that may or may not need the funds that still sit there, and asking council during the overall capital aspects to be utilizing funds that have already been identified and already been set aside for other projects. So, this was kind of one that has come to us because, right now, the current generator that we have does not, and Peyton can talk to this more than I do, does not operate the full facility. The new generator that we are installing will operate the full facility, but the electrical box that we have to connect through can't handle that level of generator, and thus, we need to update the electrical system to be able to accept the generator so that the whole facility could be run on a generator if we would need to, which we hope we don't need to.
And the nursing home has always been that quasi...
So, it's along the lines of, it can operate itself, it can afford to cover its operations, but significant capital projects are harder for them to cover, and this is one that had been put in the budget back in '22 to upgrade this system, like the Civic Center. It is a county-owned facility, and thus, the Civic Center can cover its operating costs, but its capital costs at times are beyond the ability of it to cover, and thus, we made the decision that this is one that, for the safety of the employees and the residents, that we, the county, should be covering.
And, so it's really not an enterprise fund in itself, the nursing home?
It is considered a component unit, if I'm remembering correctly. So, it is, but it is a wholly-owned facility of the county, and thus, we, or, so we own the facility, and we, it is recognized in our financial statements, so we have a financial obligation to ensure that this facility is operating at its best ability.
I don't know if this is for you, Peyton, but Dave always talks about sinking funds and things like that. Is it necessary that we should maybe have some type of a, or has the nursing home plan for like the sinking fund for major capital expenditures in the next 10 years, five years?
We have not looked at it in that regard. Could we? Yes, but we have not at this moment.
Good. Did you, have you noticed anything significant, Peyton, other than this, that you see maybe coming down the line?
Probably a roof.
Oh.
In the future.
That would be a capital expenditure.
And again, ultimately, we as the county own the facility, and we have the responsibility to ensure that the facility is up to standards and up to health codes.
I understand that 100%. I never really, you know, even getting into this from day one, I never really understood the purpose in an enterprise fund as opposed to a department, because we are all the same. We're all Wycomico County entities, but there, you know, I guess for, either for governmental or for accounting purposes, they've always established an enterprise fund on certain departments, you expect to make money and to be profitable.
Make money and don't receive an appropriation to cover their operating costs. So, the airport, the Civic Center, Wreckin' Parks, they all have to have an appropriation to cover their operating costs. We're not covering any operating costs at tourism and the nursing home, and as such, we only are covering the costs associated with rare capital projects.
Yeah, I get it. I think there may only be one enterprise on that we don't seem to be funding regularly.
Tourism, we don't fund anything. Tourism actually gives to do capital projects, and solid waste has not received anything from the general fund taxpayers currently.
That's all the questions I have. Anybody? Yes, Jeff?
I got a quick one. Looks like the proposals for just under $160,000, so if we allocate the 200 and it ends up at 160, what happens to the excess?
So, at that point in time, it would be included in that list that we're going to do this fall. Again, instead of giving the exact dollar amount, because until they get in there and do the electrical work, could there be another small change order? We hope not, but...
No, but you don't know.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, we're asking, since this project had $200,000 in it, we're asking for the full $200,000 to be moved over, and as such, it would be included in the, when we receive the final bill, it would be included in the list of projects that could have excess funds that could be utilized for other things. And this is not an unusual thing that we have come to you before, especially within Peyton, with the old courthouse, where we overestimated how much it was going to cost for one thing and underestimated another, and we transferred the funds to do that.
Thank you. All those in favor of Resolution 115-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 116-2025. This is declaring that Westwood Commerce One LLC is eligible to receive Maryland State Enterprise Own benefits for property located at 1630 Westwood Drive in Salisbury, Maryland. And we have Derek Jarman Jr. with the City of Salisbury, and Mr. Dave Ryan with our Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development.
Ms. Hurley, entertain a motion from council for Resolution 116-2025.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 117-2025. This is declaring that Westwood Commerce One LLC is eligible to receive Maryland State Enterprise Own benefits for property located at 1610 Westwood Drive in Salisbury, Maryland.
Motion from council to approve Resolution 117-2025.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dave, did you want to come up and talk about any of the projects at all?
At your pleasure.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's your pleasure as to why they, you can come up, certainly. It might help for the public to know what Westwood, you know...
Yeah, Westwood Commerce Park was, Dave Ryan, Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development, and Westwood Commerce was established, started in 2001 or so, and a little slow getting off. Right now, you have significant development happening in Westwood. These properties are St. John properties that Ms. Hurley referred to, and if you go off 50 and look over, you'll see bricks coming out of the ground. There are two 35,000-square-foot buildings, a couple of more planned. Total investment will be about $30, $35 million or so of speculative-type space. Amazon's building also within that industrial park, and we're doing a couple shovel-ready sites out there to better compete for larger-scale economic development projects. So, I think it's indicative of the confidence outside developers are seeing in the market, and, you know, we're happy that, we're happy they're here.
I know you met with Secretary of Commerce last week, and I know you've had discussions with the governor's office as well, and I know particularly that the Secretary of Commerce seemed really impressed with the kind of work that we were doing similar to this, as far as, you know, Wycomico being open for business.
Yeah, we are, and not just from a real property tax credit, which is what this is, but also from a workforce development perspective, which is, in my opinion, as important to invest in people. We started a welding school probably 10, 12 years ago, and I think if you talk to the folks at the shipyard, they'll refer to that as a key ingredient to their ability to grow as quickly as they are. We'll open an aviation maintenance technician school in a couple, in about a month. Well, actually, next week, but we'll celebrate that in about a month or so. And they train AMP mechanics, which is a, you know, highly-valued credential in the aviation industry. So, I think we're doing, and then the shovel-ready sites, so that we reduce that time it takes to get to construction, and if we do that, then that's more tax basis, more jobs quicker. So, we're going through that process. We have a couple of out in Westwood that we're working on, and about three at the airport that we're working on, so.
Dave?
You mentioned these are spec buildings, and did you say, or is that what you said?
No, sir. I said shovel-ready sites, so if I can come up with $10 million to build a spec building, we would, but we haven't figured that out yet. But we can do the next best thing, and in some respects, maybe even, maybe even better because it reduces risk, but, and that is to design a large building and place it on a parcel, and then go through that site approval process. This is stormwater management, forestation, water sewer hookups, that type of thing, because that's what takes the 18 months, 24 months of time. So, if we can reduce that and get to construction quicker, that's the goal of what I'm referring to. Ms. Rennis?
Thank you.
But if you had some funding, then...
And how's the time?
Don't put words in my mouth.
It's all good. It's all good. We appreciate all the support.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 117-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes. We have one more.
Just want to thank Mr. Derek back here, for the Enterprise Zone Administrator. He's walked into that role, and he's doing a pretty good job over there, and we appreciate the partnership, so.
Very good, very good.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 118-2025. This is declaring that Opportunity Street LLC is eligible to receive Maryland State Enterprise Own benefits for property located at 200 Cypress Street in Salisbury, Maryland.
entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 118-2025. Second?
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 118-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 119-2025. This is confirming the appointment of Timothy J. Chrysler as Deputy Director of Emergency Services, and before you, we have Mr. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration, and Steve Lake, our Assistant Director of Administration.
entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 119-2025.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Gentlemen?
Good morning.
Any comments you'd like to make?
Well, I think that, you know, we formally submitted Mr. Chrysler, and you guys were able to interview him. I think he was far and away the best candidate, especially with his, you know, not only experience being a firefighter, but also his FEMA experience, which I think is really key during this time of, you know, funding sort of irregularity coming out of Washington. So, I think he'll be a great, great employee for us.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of Resolution 119-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
This is the submission of appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Recreation and Parks Commission.
If you could just let the public know who you gentlemen are.
Hi, I'm Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Stephen Lake, and Assistant Director of Administration.
Thanks. And I, and I think Trace will come up, will do the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Steve will do the Wreckin' Parks middle.
Good morning, Tracy Taylor, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Hi, is there, you want to do one versus the other, or?
Why don't, I would suggest, in order to do this, why don't you just formally submit, do you want to formally submit all the names at one time?
That'd be great.
Let's do that.
All right, so, you know, we are formally submitting for Planning and Zoning Commission, the Charles, who everyone knows as Chip, Dashiel as the chair, I'm sorry, Daniel Moreno-Holt as a member, Minister George Melandell Copeland, Tanisha Seegers, Mary Denton, James Thomas, and Sarah Binham King.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
And we're also appointing, recommending the appointment of George Hakschwender as a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Thank you all very much. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 120-2025.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 120-2025? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 120-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes. Entertained a motion from counsel to approve, yes, go ahead, Ms. Hurley.
So before you, Resolution number 121-2025, this is confirming the appointment of Daniel Moreno-Holt as a member of the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Prior resolution, to clarify, was the appointment of Charles R. DeShiel Jr.
Yes.
Thank you. As a member and Chair. Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 121-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is Resolution 122-2025, confirming the appointment of Minister George Mandel Copeland as a member of the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 122-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution 123-2025, confirming the appointment of Tanisha Seegers as a member of the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any motion from counsel to approve Resolution 123-2025?
To move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution number 124-2025. This is confirming the appointment of Mary T. Denton as a member of the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any motion from counsel to approve Resolution 124-2025?
To move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution number 125-2025, confirming the appointment of James R. Thomas Jr., P.E. F.A.C.E.C. as a member of the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 125-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution number 126-2025, confirming the appointment of Sarah Binham King as a member of the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any motion from counsel to approve Resolution 126-2025?
To move?
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I did just want to say, of course, this is, out of all these folks that have been put forward as we close up the appointments for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the county, these are all folks who are very well-qualified and very, a lot of great experience. So I just wanted to say thank you for the Planning Director and so many others who have gone out and tried to find the right folks for this. I think this is, we're going to be in good shape with these people on there, so. Thank you. Acknowledge that.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
All those in favor of Resolution 126-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes.
Next is 127-2025, confirming the appointment of George Hochschwender as a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 127-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution 127-2025 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good morning, Mr. Benson.
Good morning, Mr. President, Council. This is an introduction of legislative bill 2025-12. It's an act to amend Chapter 138 of the Wacomico County Code titled Electrical Standards to reflect the current edition of the National Electric Code and to amend the process of promulgation of future additions. Mr. Andrew Illuminati of the Law Department is here, should there be any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained a motion from counsel to approve legislative, state legislative bill 2025-12.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Illuminati, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, Andrew Illuminati, Department of Law. So a few months ago, we were before, proposed, brought legislation forward to bring the International Residential Code, the International Building Code, and a couple other up-to-date. The electrical standards are in a separate part of the code, they're not in the building portion of the code. The Electrical Board worked on this for the last couple of months, and it's, when you look at A, B, and C are all the same verbatim language that was done for the IRC, the IVC, the IECC. This is just for the National Electric Code to bring it up to the 2023 addition, and then go through the same process going forward of the one hundred and eighty days, submit to council of any modifications. The current electrical code actually didn't have any modifications, so 138-2.1 modifications cleans up exception number two and adds in exception number three from the NEC. And that's just sort of a best practice that they found going around. Thank the Board for their hard work on this. They met, had a couple meetings and really worked on it, talked about it with the electrical inspectors about what should be some modifications to the outdoor outlets, but otherwise, they found that the 2023 NEC is pretty up to date. And that's why this is before you at this time, to get all of our codes up to date and to have the, a clean process going forward to amend when the 26 version comes out in a couple of years. All right? Thank you.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll vote, roll call vote, all those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay, starting with Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Winn.
Aye.
Councilman Ennis.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, legislative bill number 2025-12 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Illuminati.
The public hearing can be held on September the sixteenth at ten a.m.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Chetel, how are you?
Good morning, President Cannon. Good morning, County Council. I am here to present two things first, Anjali Chetel, internal auditor, here to present the annual hotline update first.
Okay.
So I submitted the report to you. In fiscal year 2025, there were nine cases, and there's, I have a table if you want to discuss any of them. The committee now established met on July seventeenth to discuss potential changes. I also sent a copy of the report to you as well as to the executive on July twenty-third, and, and so I'm now here presenting this report. And I'm not going to create a resolution, like, and make it a public report unless you would like me to. Let me know if you'd like that process changed. Last year, we said a resolution wasn't needed.
Yeah, I would think so. Any questions from anyone?
All right. Next one, the Resolution 128-2025, I'd like to present that. It's a resolution to approve a hotline service agreement between the Council of Ethical Organizations and Wacomico County, Maryland. It was the lowest of the quotes I received from at least three vendors.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution 128-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 128-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
My name is Joe White, Parsonsburg. Talking about something that's not come up, at least to my knowledge, at the County Council to this point, and I'd like to, to bring it up as a, as a, as a, something that I think is a local concern, and I, and I have a call to action that I'd like for you to consider. The Maryland Coordinated Permit Review Council has started six pilot programs in the state. I'm not sure if you are familiar with it or how familiar you are, it's not something that I know a ton about right now, and it's kind of scary. At least on the surface, it seems as though the state is going to direct state funds directly to developers for projects that the state approves. I have talked to two council members from two different town councils on the east side of the county and the west side. There is a belief that this will allow the state to force small towns such as Willards or Sharktown to accept development that they may not deem fit, or they may not want in their town. To that end, one of the pilot programs is in Salisbury, and currently, the mayor of Salisbury is fighting for infrastructure improvements that aren't funded. So this is basically a state-funded, or unfunded mandate that's causing local governments to have to spend infrastructure and accept development that may not meet their standards or code. In Wacomico County, we have about fifty percent of the people live in a municipality, Delmar, Pittsville, Willards, Fruitland. I know that you're the County Council, but all of those folks are county residents as well. I'm suggesting that you actually have a work session with the town commissioners of, of our eight municipalities, and if I've missed one, it's because I'm not good at adding. But the, have them in, and ultimately, be willing to have a similar work session, depending on the outcome of that, with county councils, I know you're part of the tri-county council, but I'm talking Maryland Eastern Shore, possibly the western Maryland counties, Cecil County, counties that have similar values, rural values that we have. Because our state government right now is looking to en-run our local, our local codes. And there's a one-case study that I think could, should scare all of us, and this is the biodiesel refinery on Atkins Road, okay? That gentleman has been on the east side of the county, he's now on the west side of the county with state money. He's appealing that decision to circuit court, and I don't know that he's using his own money or if he's using state money. It would be really bad to have someone from Baltimore County to come to our county, use our state funds to fight us and our insidies. We need you to stand up for us. Thank you.
Good morning, Vaughn Seegers, Wacomico County resident. I am wanting to share with you my observations from, from six months of observations at Westside Primary School, where there is a teacher referred to as the veteran teacher of the kindergarten classes. And this teacher obviously did not want a particular student in her class, and chose to not educate that child, abused, as I sat there and I, and I observed, and I thought, what a hostile atmosphere, what an abusive atmosphere, continuously denigrating the kid, telling the kid, like, for instance, oh, class, class, or friends, friends, we're going to do this or that, and you are not. And just continuously doing that day after day with their child, yelling at that child, preventing that child from being integrated into the classroom, sit back there at the back table somewhere, don't sit too close to anybody on the carpet, just one thing after the other. The principal did not intervene in that situation. There was a time when, from that class, I stood in line with the students while they waited their turn to use the restroom, and I heard continuously on the other side of the door, stop, that hurt, you're hurting me, stop, stop, from another student, and out walks the assistant from that class and the student from that class with that, that child in tears. That teacher was told that a, a particular parent did not want their child behind closed doors with that assistant. So the teacher would take that child to the restroom instead. That child reported that the teacher would take them in and hit them upside their head and pull their ears. So there were times when there were students who did not speak well, who, who may not have been as developed as some of the other teachers, students, who would just shoot along or pushed along without giving them the time and the attention that they needed. It was observed from the principal, it was observed from the teacher, it was observed from that assistant. The classroom environment did not create a productive opportunity for the child to prosper. There were several children who did not prosper in that class. Before the school year was over, in fact, the last marking terms, there were multiple kids who were moved from that teacher's classroom. Parents, teachers, guardians, we do not have American Education Week anymore, you may visit your classrooms at any time, and I would encourage you to do so. I know that Westside Primary is under a new administration this year, because that administrator retired, but please, don't just send your kids off to school and feel that you can just ensure that they're going to get a kind of treatment and care and education that you're hoping for. If someone looks their classroom and decide that, I don't want to teach this one, I don't want to teach that one, I don't want to be bothered with this one, they have the opportunity to do that and not be held accountable. I plan to pursue this further. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Counsel comments?
Seems like, I'm sorry I'm late, but it seems like my doctor wasn't on the schedule that he was supposed to be on this morning, but it's hard to believe, the summer's almost over. School will be starting up soon, so I urge everyone to be careful driving around school buses. Safety of our kids is at stake here. Slow down, obey the laws. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Seegers?
Yes, appreciate everybody being here and for tuning in. I did have a constituent ask that I share with everyone, that they've been upset with the amount of these, you know, yard signs and buy our house, you know, call this number to buy this house or whatever. These, these signs that are basically put on the sides of the road are usually from companies in Delaware, apparently, but they've also been stapling them and putting them into our, on the county infrastructure. So they had asked that I bring that up and basically say that there, as we address trash and other kinds of visual impacts, this is one of those areas where we need to do more because there's so many of these types of signs, and, and I'll share with the, with the council, with the executive, what, some of what the, has been sent to me, but I did say that I'd bring that up, and that is, I would agree, a bigger and bigger issue.
I'd agree with Josh. I mean, I, I think that is becoming an issue, you know, except for, like, you know, campaign season, whenever people need to get their names out there, which, whatever, but on the day-to-day, every single day, when people put, like, their signs on public property, it's not like it's in front of somebody's house or anything, it's, yeah, and then it just sits there for months and months and breaks down, and then it's all over the road. That, I think that is a growing problem, but it's interesting you should point that out.
Good morning, everybody. So last week was Mako, Maryland Association of Counties Conference, lots of good information as always, they do a good job getting everything out to everybody, a lot of tough decisions ahead statewide. Thursday, President Cannon and I attended the ribbon cutting for the Title Health Clinic over on Church Street and Naylor Street. I didn't know until Thursday that they'd already been open for a couple of weeks, accepting patients, so what a fantastic facility that is, inside and out. Kudos to everybody involved in that project. That, that, what a great thing for our community, what a great thing for the neighborhood, and it sounds like that's the first of more to come. Friday, we, we were at the ribbon cutting for the fair, another great annual event. The weather actually cooperated this year, so that was really, really good. But again, shout out to the team that put the fair together, the Fair Commission and the folks, Steve Miller and his team at Wacken Parks, they, they always do a great job. And that's all I got.
Under presidential comments, I would agree with Jeff, it's a lot going on you don't realize until you're going to so many different ribbon cuttings and so many different events. There was also an event at the Westside Community Center that Jeff not attended, that Jeff got there a lot earlier than I did. I had to apologize to them because I, honestly, I had the wrong time in my calendar, which doesn't happen that often. But anyway, it's a really good group down there. They're very organized and it's a pleasure to work with them. They were discussing the Tippin, the Wittipquin State Park issue, which will be coming up again, I believe, on September 23rd, is when there will actually be at the same community center, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Where Secretary Kurtz will be coming down to discuss it. So if you're interested in the state park issue, whether you want it to be in Tippin State, the Wittipquin property, whether you're interested in maybe another property being designated as the state park in Wycomico County, that's an event on September 23rd. What time is it, Jeff?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM for the public. And that'll also be held at the Westside Community Center. So just for your information. Ms. Sigurs, we do have a meeting with the Wycomico County Board of Education. I'm not going to hold them to task on your issues, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we certainly will share your concerns with them. I'm not going to make any immediate demands on them today because we don't really like to ambush, you know, any members who come to the table without prior knowledge. So we'll mention it, but just give them the opportunity, whether they want to have any comments on it now or whether they'd like to get back to us. But we do appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Well, it would be a meeting between the Board of Education and the council. We appreciate your offer. That being said, let's get to the chairman. Entertained a motion from council to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305b8, to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation relating to national opioid settlements and a DAF storage tank to protect the county's legal position.
Still move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item we have on an open work session, discussion with the Wycomico County NAACP, the Caucus of African-American Leaders, and Ward Watchman with One Voice Ministerial Alliance. And this is in regard to community concerns and needs.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We do have some individuals on Zoom, so if you could just give us a couple of minutes to get that connected to the big screen.
Okay.
James, we have an individual that's waiting in the waiting room under your name.
I just wanted to see if it was working or not. Don't worry about letting him in.
Okay.
Yeah. I thought I logged out. I apologize.
This is the ACLU two quid about 287.
Sorry, are we still waiting?
We're ready.
Oh, we are ready, okay. At what point in time are we preparing? I thought we were going to put a map up as well, so we're prepared for all that.
We do have a map ready when you're ready.
When you're ready. Well, I'll put it.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Well, good morning still, right? It hasn't been two hours. No, actually, it has been. It's been a bit.
Time flies.
Yeah, it's been about an hour. But anyway, it's still morning. If you could, from my left to right, state your name and your position, we'd appreciate that for the public.
James Yamakawa, Secretary of Wycomico NAACP.
I'm Eddie Boyd, Jr. I'm also a member of the NAACP, but I'm here as one of the plaintiffs in the initial suit.
Have you?
Mary Ashanti, resident Wycomico County, Wycomico County, life member of the NAACP, board member of the Caucus of American Leaders.
Good to have you all here. Mary, it's good to see you back doing council business again.
I watch you on.
I'm sure you do.
You know I watch you on.
I know, I can tell, I could feel it.
Because I send you emails.
I know. Appreciate it. We always have. I will allow whoever wants to have the floor to open the conversation. We really do appreciate that the letter that you sent us with the information to discuss so that we could at least, you know, get information that we felt was relevant for the meeting today, so that we weren't wasting anybody's time. And I know that we reached out to the executive's office, we reached out to Sheriff Lewis, and we reached out to State's Attorney Jamie Dykes, and they all did respond with their, with the questions that you had in regard to their department. So we appreciate the notice ahead of time, and I will give you the floor to go through your questions.
Mary Ashanti, it would be, we would like to go down the list if we could.
Sure, certainly.
So if you will go down the list, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe the first question you have was, where were we as far as updating the status of the creation of the Human Rights Advisory Council? And in addition to that, was the creation, the scheduling, and the curriculum for the anti-bias training and who would be required to attend? And then the third section of that first inquiry was the creation of new districts and the publication of those districts to the constituency, right?
Right.
We do know that from the response from the legal department, that the creation of the Human Rights Advisory Council, that is still with the legal department. So they are still working through that, and that's the most information we have on that at the time, but it is being addressed. And the same with the anti-bias training. That is also between the legal department and our human resources department. They are also currently working on that to establish those parameters. And then the third section of that, the creation of the new districts and the publication of those districts to the constituents, we do have a link on our website where the map can be easily accessed, Mrs. Hurley.
So we do have a letter from our Board of Elections that gives an update as to where that is. You know, basically, in the fall of 2025, she'll be sending out cards to all the voters. And let's see what else she says. The maps are on the website, the GIS map room. And any candidate that's interested in filing, they can certainly call or stop by the elections office.
I did, yes.
And I can provide a copy of this if you wish.
I did have a discussion with Ms. Church at the MAKO sessions when they were in Ocean City, and they are working day and night trying to get this up to speed. She says, it's, Josh, she goes, it's a much more monumental task than just changing a few names and addresses and getting everything in order. So they're working very hard to try to make sure they have it all prepared ahead of time to get the information out as well. And if you think about it, certainly with early voting and with mail-in ballots and things like that, it is, it's quite a process for them. So she actually came to me and to get my attention, let me know and to assure me that they were working on it diligently.
Just to follow up.
Yes, sir.
So how widely known is it within the community and within Wycomico County of this, this is a fairly large change in the voting? How widely known is that among the citizens?
Well, that's a good question, Dr. Boyd. I know that we've put it on our website. We made certain that the link was on the front page of the web, of our Wycomico County website, because I had people who were asking me, what is happening? Where is it? You know, what district am I going to be in? And so I referred them or I talked to Mrs. Hurley to make sure that we put it on the front page of the Wycomico County website, so anybody going there, it would be obvious enough for them to access it immediately without too much difficulty. And it is an interactive map where they can zoom in and they can see what street they're, they live on and what district they're going to be in. Outside of that, we did put out a press release initially that, when it was changed. We haven't done anything since, but you make a really good point. There might be a need by which to continue to promote that as we get closer to the campaign process. And we're not, we're somewhat there now. I know that filing is being done at this current time, but I think you're right, it might be something we should look at and try to figure exactly how we might better promote it over the next year between now and November. It's a good point, because honestly, sometimes we just take things for granted, we think the people are paying attention, and you're right, they're not always doing so.
My sense is, people are tuning out so much now, nowadays, you know. In fact, I'm surprised to the number of people who even look at local media, you know, local television. So many have cut the cable and that sort of thing. Especially that's, it's a generational thing, I think, with the younger people. If it's not on the electronic media and, you know, whatever they use, they don't seem to engage with information.
Yeah, that's a really good point, because I heard mentioned the other day, I was watching national news, and the comment was made that it was stated that possibly 60 to 70% of individuals from the age of, let's say, 16 to 28, they're getting all their information from Instagram and X or, you know, whatever else there might be, Josh, in the world.
Leaning minds on X.
But my point being is that a large majority of those individuals who are active, not only in the communities but in the electoral process, are, they're on social media.
Right.
And they're not on Facebook anymore either.
Right.
So it's something we would have to review. It's a very good point.
Also, look no further than the voter turnout. I don't know the statistics, but I know every time I see after an election what the turnout actually was, it's really dismal, I guess you could say, or not as good as we all would like to see it to be. So that's the end result of what you're discussing and, you know, how we can change the general outlook and the interest, as you're mentioning, would be worthy. I don't know how that's to be done, but.
Anybody else in the group, either on Zoom or here, have anything else on this section?
We can't hear if you could, could you? Who is that?
We have Zoe Ginsburg on Zoom, and then we also have Amber's Note Taker. I'm not sure if that's actually Amber is on there or.
Okay. Well, before we leave this, the creation of a Human Rights Advisory Council and the You said that the legal department is working on that. Do they have a timeline as to when they're going to? Because we're in the eighth month now of the year. So do they have a timeline that they can let us know as to that is created and whatever else that go with it?
Mr. Wilber, if you could come to the podium, or you could come to the chair if you want to address it, I'll give you your choice. Thank you. Bless you.
Good morning. Paul Wilbur, county attorney. To answer your question, the Human Rights Advisory Committee, that should come forward as a resolution to the council within the next month. And as far as the anti-bias training, we had, I had talked with the JET about that back in April. ASLU had requested copy of written materials that would be the subject of the anti-bias training. And I requested that in May and again in July and haven't received it. So that's where that stands.
You requested that from?
From legit. That's the Local Government Insurance Trust, who said that they could provide the anti-bias training.
Okay. And they haven't given you a timeline yet?
I'm waiting to receive the written materials, which will be the, might say, the foundation for the training session that they will conduct.
Okay. And the name of the company? Because James is our secretary.
Legit, Legal? Local Government Insurance Trust. Cool, thank you.
Okay, so. Give us a time as to when you can get back with us or whatever. The first meeting in September, can you have something to be able to tell us just about two weeks from now? Just to let us know what's going on, I mean.
Sure, I can certainly make another effort in that regard. I might also talk with Ms. Ginsburg, perhaps, and the ASLU has a trainer that could do this.
That would be great. And so if you could make our council president aware, whatever, and he will go from there.
Sure.
Okay. The second. Would like more information or representation in county boards and departments, including process of appointing people to boards and commission.
Right, we did reach out to the executive branch on that because the, that type of a role was really within the executive branch. The council more as, acts as a confirmation process of that. And the response that we got with it, in most cases, the staff of the boards or the committees make those requests to the executive branch and make the recommendations to the executive branch, because those are the ones when they know that they have someone who's either, their term is expiring or someone may be leaving, then they're the ones that actually know that's occurring, so they reach out to the executive's office with their recommendations as to who they want to replace, to be replaced on those boards. And then the executive forwards those recommendations to the council, and the council makes its decision.
Okay, so in that process, how will the community know that there is vacancy on these boards?
Again, it was something that was suggested that this is the responsibility of either any type of a committee or any type of a board to try to maybe promote that from their own, you know, from their own resources. A request hasn't been made for the county to formally, I think, send out any type of advertising to that effect. So that's the process that has initiated. I would tell you that when it comes to the council, it's not always a situation where we always know whether or not, because I know you're very concerned sometimes about equal representation. The council doesn't always know when, I think we did, recently, we did numerous appointments to a couple of commissions, and we don't always know what that individual may be, what their gender may be, what their race may be, what their ethnicity may be. We have no way of knowing that. And I think sometimes, I sometimes question as to whether it's an ethical question to even ask that question, as if that's pertinent. I just don't know whether that's, we look at the qualifications of the individual, we do get resumes of the individuals, and we usually go by that to see whether or not the person is the most qualified.
Well, you should resume.
Sorry. Comments?
I would just like to add, according to like the committees, I sit on the public, I sit on the Parks and Rec Committee and the Wrexon Tourism, the Civic Center one as well. There's two of them that I sit on with our director, Steve Miller. And I'd like to add that they are public meetings, like anyone can attend them. And that is a good way to get to know, like, the people that are running the committees and trying to get on the committees. You know, to make the process a little easier, if you're trying to sit on one of these boards, they should be public. So just so you're aware, they're not, they're not. So just so, just so you're aware, they, they're not, they're not behind closed doors. We have chairs. We have some audience members that actually come to some of our meetings. But yes, we try to keep it as open as possible and we, we, we don't, like John said, we don't make the appointments. We, we approve the appointments. We look at the resumes, we look at the, the names and we don't, we don't actually see the individual coming in the door. We go off the qualifications. So.
Okay. So, and I thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Because we need to encourage people to attend the.
I agree.
The meetings because all the meetings are public.
Right.
And in that way, we'll be able to see, number one, their makeup and also what the committee.
And I would like to add that the committees that I sit on are extremely diverse, if that's what the concern is. And they are extremely diverse. So.
Jeff?
I just wanted to, so I've had three different folks reach out over the last couple, two months or so, and one by text, one by email, one by call. But they wanted to get a better understanding of how to serve on particular boards and what's coming up. I think a lot of that was prompted by the, the breaking apart our, the city and the county planning together. But I started working with those constituents or those folks who reached out and the people say, okay, well, here's where you have to go to, to click here for this board. And they're like, well, how do I find out if it's open? I was like, well, we don't, legislative branch doesn't handle that, the executive branch does. Anyway, in working through the process with them, it became, it is very clear that it is, it is a bit of an arduous process to find out what committee, what committees have which openings, et cetera. So I didn't know if there was like a, you know, it'd be nice if there was a button on the, you know, a Wycomico County.org website, like a permanent button says, I want to serve on a board or commission. You know, click that, submit a resume, you know, like drop in, like, oh, I want, here's a big list of, you know, committees or commissions or boards, you know, something where we could take the information in and then that could then go to those committees or, or at least go to the executive branch, or I don't know. But it is certainly a more challenging process to be able to join a board or commission and probably more so, more, more challenging than it should be. So I don't know if that's something maybe we could talk with our, you know, our head of our IT and try to figure out if we were updating our website, could there be something, a simple tool like that where it could be a dropdown and, and folks could submit a resume and, and that way it's, there's a process as opposed to the current process where it's, hey, you know, somebody drops off, they didn't expect them to drop off, you know, let's try to find somebody, who do we know, kind of a thing. It just seems a bit not as straightforward. So if we could make that more straightforward, I think it would be easier for us in responding to constituents, but also it would be, I think, helpful for the public to get a, a variety of folks applying.
So can you all make a recommendation to IT to look at that? Because if, when you go to the site, you should be able to find out all the boards and whatever. And if I click on something, I should be able to find out something about the board. So, and, and, so that would be good.
Yeah. And Mr. President, I know we tried not to step on the executive branch's toes and, and by law, we're not allowed to, but if there were a way to maybe have that conversation with, you know, with the IT folks, if there were a better way to streamline this process, maybe that could be helpful.
Yeah, I think it was simple enough. And Mrs. Charlie, I believe what we could do is, is possibly notify, notify the boards and commissions that when they have openings, to immediately make sure that they're sharing that information on the county website. Okay?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
So that would also take care of diversity and quality of those appointments.
Right.
Um, I don't know, the other one is number department heads and a number department heads who are African-American or, or of color. And so I, I think we would like to see that in, in writing and for us to look at and that type of thing. Because when you, I don't like, very much like to use the word diversity, since people think it's a bad word, but equity and, and fairness.
Fairness.
Fairness on, on these, on these boards and in the departments and that type of thing. So if we could have a list of that, we would appreciate it and that would take care, we could see for ourselves and, and, and hopefully, if there's not enough, we can then talk to the executive as to how it can improve. Because I believe executive appoint department heads and you all approve it.
And we confirm.
You all confirm.
Yes, we confirm, correct.
Okay. So.
We can do that, we can do that.
You can do that.
We currently, from the executive's office, we've been informed that there, there are, of course, 11 department heads and that two of those department heads are African-American. And actually, it was at one point in time, three were of color just recently until one resigned. So, and that was about 27%, which wasn't, wasn't a bad total compared to the, to the demographics in the community. So it's currently, it's two. It was three within the last two months, I'd have to say. And we're still, there's still outreach going on.
Okay. So I used to communicate with Ms. Hurley and whatever.
You can still communicate with Ms. Hurley, she's the best. And if she needs to, to forward your, your communications to maybe Bunkie Lofman with the executive's office, we could do that.
Okay.
She'll, she'll direct you wherever you need to go.
Okay. So we've been, we greatly appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, I'm talking a lot, so those of you that are here.
Thank you.
I'm like writing notes here.
Mary, I think these gentlemen know you well enough.
Right.
The other is, the third is most important to us. We're concerned about 287G agreement, whether the council planned to support it, what power the council had to conduct oversight over the sheriff's department. And so you have the questions, if you could go down the questions and, and just answer it.
Let me pull this up here. We were, Sheriff Lewis was nice enough to get us, get a response to these topics and he was very, very direct in how he was addressing these. I'll give you some excerpts from what he sent. I don't know whether or not you were copied on this, but.
No, we did not receive it.
Okay. Yes. He was saying that he was, he, he has no problem addressing these concerns. He noted that no one had, as of yet, had reached out to him to ask whether or not the sheriff's department was going to be involved in this process. And he stipulates that he had not entered into any type of an agreement yet in regard to the 287G programs with ICE. He was trying to, he said he's felt, excuse me, compelled to explore other legal, his legal options for making the community safer and by working closer with the federal partners. He's in, he's in favor of doing that and I, I agree with that. I can understand that because his responsibility is to enforce the laws and he goes, our enforcement activities will only affect those, and I think this is important in what he stated, our enforcement activities will only affect those in violation of the law or those we believe might have violated the law. So I think he's trying to be clear with that. He goes on to state that their working relationship with ICE will be restricted to our local detention center. And once aliens are arrested by local law enforcement on totally unrelated criminal charges, and I think that's important, what he's saying, that the local officers aren't arresting them as, as migrants, they're, they're, once they've been arrested on unrelated criminal charges or by ICE and are brought into the Wycomico County Detention Center, then that's when a, a, a relationship develops as far as how we're going to, to assist. They won't be conducting enforcement activities with ICE on the streets. And that's probably the biggest takeaway, I think, that was a concern of the community, is that there's not going to be, you know, Wycomico County officers on the street working hand in hand with ICE to, to, I guess, arrest any, any type of suspects. And they say also that in no way will school resource officers, deputies be affected whatsoever. I think that was a big, there was a bit of rumors going around that that was going to be happening in the schools, but the resource officers are not going to be taking part in that. Other question outside of the, outside of the 287G is concerned as far as the demographics of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. He states quite emphatically that they are more diverse than they have ever been. And he has an, he is encouraging anyone who wants to come to the sheriff's department to please do so. And, and we'll share this letter with you, of course.
Please, thank you.
Yeah. He sent it to us. This was all last minute because we weren't quite sure what the questions were, I believe, until Friday. And, and Sheriff Lewis, as well as State's Attorney Jamie Dykes, got back to us yesterday with these, these letters and this information. So they were very quick to respond. But in this letter, he also says that he encourages everyone to come to the ribbon cutting for the new sheriff's office. It's going to be Saturday, October 24th at 10 a.m., at, what's, what is the time, Jeff? Is it 10 a.m.? 10 a.m., yeah. So it'll be at 10 a.m. But we'll forward this information to you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
Good hearing.
Just a point of clarification. So the, according to local news articles in the past couple of weeks, the sheriff's department is looking into working out a memorandum, sorry, excuse me, memorandum of understanding with the county executive's office to present to Immigration Customs Enforcement. Is that something that has to be approved by the county council or solely by the county executive?
That's a very good question because, and that's, that was my first question. I can't believe it. Because they do, they do clearly state, I'll read exactly how it's been phrased, that the process to get started is that the county executive will need to write a letter of interest to the acting executive associate, associate director of ICE enforcement and removal operations. So that's how they're looking at the process starting. A lot of times, I think, maybe on the federal level, they're not quite certain of exactly how all the local levels may, may, their legislative process may work, whether or not it's adequate for the executive to make that recommendation or, and I'd have to check with Mr. Benson or Mr. Illuminati on what the legal implications might be as to whether the county council has to authorize that as well or approve it. It's a small, a small measure that we would look at here independently, but they are requesting some type of recognition from the, from the government agency first.
So just to be clear, then they are planning to at least make that first move?
Well, this, this is basically how the process works. And that's, that's what was shared with us from Sheriff Lewis. He says that is how the process will work.
I guess what I'm asking is whether or not the sheriff's office and the county executive will implement that first step in the process.
He has had conversations with, with the executive and he's, and the county administrator and the deputy administrator. So they have had conversations about this, the proposal, and everyone at this point in time appeared to be unanimously supporting this effort. So that you recognize that. Hasn't been, I've, I've had conversations, I know some comments have been made, I think, through some emails with Joe, that the council president's been informed of it and et cetera, but I haven't really had, I've had a couple of very brief comments with Sheriff Lewis, nothing much in detail. This is probably the most information I've had, but I would support it as well. But it's not my decision, it's the council's decision. So, but it hasn't come before this council as any type of formal recommendation at all or request.
And, and the training that I received is that the sheriff cannot do this on his own. He needs the approval of the county exec and the county council in order for this to happen. So what we're asking of this body, and by now, I know you know what 287G is, but anyway, across Maryland, immigrant families, including those with legal status, are being targeted by harmful 287G agreements that turn local law enforcement into extensions of ICE. These agreements erode trust and make our neighbors afraid to call the police when they need help and put politics above public safety. Our county should be a place where all residents, no matter where they come from or who their parents are, can live without fear. And so we stand against any policies that target the most vulnerable among us, including children and undocumented resident. So we go on record now saying that we urge you all not to agree to 287G. Local law enforcement need to be about local law enforcement businesses, not an extension of ICE. And I was talking to a social worker and she said that it is already happening, that sheriff office, Salisbury, city police and all that, that immigrants are reporting that they're already, this, this practice has already started. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going to say this. Lord help me. Over the years, anything that the sheriff have asked for, even though we were against it, the county has agreed to it. And that concerns me. It concerns me that local law enforcement, who was supposed to protect and serve, and I was told by somebody in law enforcement that this not their job to protect and serve citizens. So I don't know why our tax dollars are going to them if that's not their job. But the community is very concerned about us getting involved, us meaning Wycomico County, getting involved in this, in, in federal issue with ICE. We're hoping that you all will not agree to a memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's department and ICE. Once, once these folks get to the sheriff's department and whatever, I know they have to do their job, but for folks are concerned, if ICE rolls up and then the sheriff rolls up, that's working together. That means I can't trust you because you're not out there protecting me, you're doing whatever the federal government say. So we know that once a person gets to the sheriff's department and whatever, they have to do, or nearly do whatever. But citizens should not lose trust that the sheriff's department or any of the city, the, the city of Salisbury or anywhere where else is working with ICE against them.
Mary, I think in, in reference to the sheriff's letter, he did state very clearly that they were not going to be on the streets with ICE. He was emphatic about that. So I think that could, should, I would hope, would alleviate the concerns in that regard.
But why would they need a memorandum of understanding? I don't understand.
It's more of the processing part of it after, after, once they're detained or if they're, if they're detained on, let's say, the sheriff's department arrests somebody for, for assault and takes them to the, to the county, to the jail. And they're processing that individual and they find out that that individual has no, does not have the proper, I guess, certifications in their, in the country illegally. At that point in time, they will cooperate with ICE to let them know this individual is in their custody and move forward from there. In addition, if, if ICE comes down and has, you know, a situation, and I'm just speaking of what I think this, this means, that they come down, they find that there are ICAs made several arrests, what, what will they do? Where are they going to go? How are they going to process this many people, depending on what the circumstances might be? So I think that the memo of understanding or the memo of agreement would be that they, that the local sheriff's department would assist them to some extent as to how they could help with that processing. But it is not on the streets. It's not on the streets.
Whether it's on the streets or in the jails, because I know one of the options under 287G was typically working within the jails. That was like the third option. One was officers essentially deputized by federal law enforcement to act as federal law enforcement. One was dealing with warrants and the other one was dealing with situations within the jail system itself. That seems to be the one that. That seems to be the one that Sheriff Lewis seems to be most intent upon. That may be a parsing of words, but working with ICE is working with ICE or isn't working with ICE, is that, whether it's on the streets or not, it's still working with them. And I think the biggest thing we need to know is, when the council knows whether legally has the ability to say yes or no to this agreement, how will you let us know? That you have that, you do or do not have that legal standing to say yes or no to this?
I don't understand that question.
Okay. If Sheriff Lewis and the county executive's office put forward this memorandum of understanding to work with ICE, yes, they won't be on the street, but they'll still be working with ICE, when will this body know, be let known that the county council has or does not have the authority to block that or approve it?
Well, I would have to leave that up to discretion, the sheriff's office to inform you as to maybe what his plans might be. I don't see where the council is going to be working day in and day out as a, with any type of hands-on oversight in this matter.
Do you approve of it, though? You have to approve of it.
We approve of the matter, but I don't see where we're going to be doing day-to-day oversight. This is very new to everybody here, so I can't give you a definitive answer.
I understand, I understand.
What I would say, and getting back to your suggestion that they would be deputized, et cetera, they, the officers, the ICIs, I understand it, ICE is not going to allow just randomly three or four officers to all of a sudden be working with ICE. They have to go through training in order for them, for the deputies to be qualified to work with ICE and to make sure that, I think they probably do that to make sure there's not any serious errors that may occur, to make sure that these individuals, that they're going to take them and give them this responsibility, they want to make sure that it's like a four-week training program where they make certain that these individuals are going to be responsible with the responsibility that has been, you know, been given to them. So it's not as if they put a badge on them and send them out into the streets, no. It's just a fact of when they say deputized, it just means that they are qualified to be doing what they consider to be a responsible job in dealing with the safety of the public.
But I think what he was asking was, at this point, you're not sure whether or not the council would need to approve the memorandum of understanding, as I understand. You're not sure what your role would be in that process. But if at some point in time it becomes clear that the council is, council's approval or disapproval of the MOU is needed, then at that point in time, will you notify us that, first of all, that you now are, need to be a part of that process? And at some point in time, you will be making a decision about whether or not you're going to go along with the memorandum of understanding.
We could certainly get, yes, Ms. Hurley.
I was just going to suggest that perhaps I can let Ms. Shanti know that it's on our agenda if it comes over.
Yes, certainly. And we wouldn't have any problem at all letting the NAACP, no, I say the NAACP, I'm assuming that's maybe the lead group here, make them aware of when this, when these commitments, if these commitments do begin exactly when they begin. I'd say if we do agree, and again, I don't know, we don't know yet until we talk the legal, whether the council has a role in this initial MOA. But either way, we will make certain that you are aware when this has occurred, you know, as a courtesy, without doubt.
Mr. President, I mean, I'll defer to Ms. Hurley, but my assumption is if there is, if the sheriff and the executive move forward and they submit a proposed MOU to the council, it would be, there would be a, it would be introduced and there would be a public hearing. And it would be, the notice would be put out about a public hearing in the NAACP, and anybody else would be entitled to come to the meeting and make whatever comment they want.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
I mean, is that not correct, Ms. Hurley, the normal process?
Not necessarily, we don't necessarily have to have a public hearing. I don't know if it's legally required, but it's certainly up to the council as to whether or not they want to do it irregardless. But my point is, I mean, if it goes on our agenda, I can certainly make that phone call to let you guys know that it is now before the county council. And then you can let me know whether or not you need a public hearing.
And I think it would warrant a public hearing.
Yes. There needs to be a public hearing, and there needs to be a good understanding of what the role of the sheriff department will be, because I'm hearing you say one thing, but the community is believing something different and whatever. And so where problem, problem comes up when this body or any other political body does not take the time to explain and hear people and get a good understanding and put it out there so that folks really understand, yes, this is happening, but I can trust, I can trust that this is what it is and that we're protected. Trust is very important. And I don't want, and I'm just saying I, but we don't want a situation we're in, we're being dictated to, and that we don't have a say, and that our say is not important. We don't, and I don't mean to tell our time on this, but this is important because it affects people's lives. And if the sheriff is saying that it's not being done, I'm saying to you, maybe he needs to check his folks because some people are reporting that ICE and sheriff, people from the sheriff department are showing up at the same time. They didn't say the places and whatever. So we can move on to the next one.
Mr. President.
Normally, I put my phone on mute, so I apologize for it going off. And, but I was looking for Councilwoman Shields. I noticed she was acting today. And so she was on the phone. So happily, I have it on mute to let me know that she wasn't here today because she had a sister that passed away on yesterday. So I'm sorry to hear that. But at least, you know, she wanted us to know why she's not a part of this meeting.
Yeah, I did announce she wasn't here. I did not state, I didn't want to go that far. I didn't know if that was my privilege, but I appreciate you.
I took that privilege.
Thank you.
People should know.
We appreciate it.
And I was talking with her yesterday, and I didn't know that, you know, her sister must have died after.
I was, yeah, I was just, I just got word of that last night.
Yeah, yeah.
President.
Yes, Josh.
Just as we close out the ICE conversation, I did, I've had more than a few folks who have reached out, especially at a big meeting on this past weekend. But obviously, the trust and credibility, I think, as Michelle, as Shanti brought up, that is a real issue. ICE's credibility could not be any bit lower with, you know, wearing masks like gang members or with, you know, kicking away Maryland citizens and disappearing them in foreign, you know, foreign places, foreign countries, without any due process. Or in this case, with recently taking an Eastern Shore pastor, he's been here for 30 years and does not have a pathway for citizenship or any way to achieve that, not by his problem, but by Congress's inaction. So rightfully so, a ton of people, this is why that topic is so salient in the public, is that you have far too many people who highly distrust this process and this organization of ICE specifically. I did want to say, while I was at the Maryland State Counties Conference last week, I did have multiple folks I ran into who were having these conversations in their counties. And actually, one, there was actually Maryland Matters article about this, about how the county councils are having the ICE representatives come before them and share what they're doing, what they're doing, what's happening, as a way to try to elevate the trust or at least, you know, add more transparency to the process. But, so I don't know if that, maybe that's something that we could consider if there is a, I don't know who, I couldn't even tell you who our local ICE representative is for our region, but certainly, they have not done a good job here on the Eastern Shore in elevating trust among the community, and that is why this issue is so important. So, yeah. And I'd love to have us as a, I'd love to vote on that as an issue. I'd love to also have transparency from ICE. So if there's anything we can do in that way, I'd love to see that happen.
The other is, is about the Devon Toll situation. The county and the amount of money that the county has to pay. And so I guess some of the questions that we had was that, is the state's attorney office a county department or a state department?
It's not a county department. We consider it a state department, in fact, that the county does fund it. But, you know, there is limited authority over what the county council actually, control has over the state's attorney's office.
So our county, our tax dollar goes to the state's attorney's office, but we don't have any.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's sort of one of those quasi-agencies where the state also has funding and puts funding forward for the state's attorney office. So it's not that we have total oversight on that. It's the same with Wycombe County Health Department. It's called the Wycombe County Health Department, but I'd say 80% of the employees there are state employees, and we do fund it, but not, you know, the state also has the responsibility for funding as well.
Okay. The reason why that came up is for several reasons. The amount of money, and it should be paid to this gentleman. But I'm hoping that the county have a discussion, even though you don't have oversight, have a discussion with the state's attorney's office. I don't know who was doing what when this happened and whatever. But this money is taxpayers' money, and it's going out, and because somebody in the state's attorney's office didn't do the right thing or made a mistake. And so I think a private conversation need to be had so that this does not happen again. The next thing is more information on how the county can increase outreach to and representation of issues facing the outer district of the county. I think folks are thinking that those areas on the, I said outskirts of Salisbury or in the counties or whatever, do not get the, do not get the representation that it should. Now, I've listened to Councilwoman Holloway, and I thank you for your service. You and I over the years have not always agreed, but I have great respect for you. Of the different stuff that goes on in his district and stuff like that, we need for all council people to be making sure that the district that they serve, and going forward in 2026, there'll be seven and whatever, that issues are being dealt with, that you show up, especially when invited, and even if you're not, if it's a public meeting, and find out what's going on. And council, when, I've been to several meetings where you were there, and one was in your district, and I thank you, whatever. And I'm not trying to, I didn't mean to single everyone out, but there used to be a time wherein, when I was president, and this may not be what they were meaning, the council person for District One and the president played, I almost said phone tag, but one would show up for part of this meeting and go to the other one, and the other one would show The people in the county needs to know that you care, not just for your district, but that you care for them. That if I saw you and I had a complaint, and it may not be your district, but you're going to talk to whoever it's supposed to be and whenever. We need for you all, and I'm not concerned about whether you're Republican or Democrat, I think I've said it before, when you get in on this council, you are, you represent all of us. And I don't know if they have anything to say to that or not, but this is what we need. This is what we need. Do you have any comment to this?
I don't, I don't have any comment to that, but I.
Go ahead.
The only thing that I certainly agree with, and I think the county council members would agree, that, you know, even though you may represent a district, the entire county is your business. I mean, you work for the county. And so I think that's sort of just taken as a foundational belief, what it means to serve, you know, on the county council or the Board of Education or what have you, you know. And so maybe, I mean, I think what it's probably leading toward, though, is oftentimes we have a tendency to work in silos. And as we move to all single-member districts, then maybe there needs to be even a greater to ensure that all council persons are looking out for the betterment of the entire county and not so glued or interested into your personal district and from which you've been elected. And I think that's something going forward, that we need to ensure that that still works. And as a county-wide elected county person, I mean, you certainly had, knew you had that responsibility, but I think all of you know that responsibility and accept that as your responsibility. And from what I can gather, you do it pretty well, as well as Councilmember Holloway, certainly he looks after the eastern part of the county, but he's not so glued on the eastern part that he doesn't get involved with the rest of the county.
I've seen, I've seen him in Sharp Town before.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I've seen him on the, in Council District One, you know, and certainly, the landfill is a big issue. I remember you were quite helpful on, even though it's in District One, but it's a, the landfill is a county, and that's going to come up over and over again, yeah, but I understand that.
You make a really, really good point. I hadn't thought about that really, but the seven districts, you don't want us to be isolated in independent silos. That's really, that's a really good point.
Right.
Pretty much so.
And I don't know if I came across saying that this whole Councilman Holloway is concerned, but that's not what I was saying. I was using him as an example, that when I listen to him, I'm very proud of, you know, of him.
So we.
I haven't always even said that.
Thank you. Mrs. Shawna, I do want to get back very briefly to, and we recognize what you're saying, we recognize your points of that. I didn't want to, I would be remiss if I didn't mention what State's Attorney Dykes shared with us as well, which is a letter that you'll also get. This is a letter that just came in.
Go ahead.
Late yesterday. But she has met with Mr. Toll and his family to make sure that, you know, she's on a one-to-one communication with them. She certainly does understand and empathize with his family over the tragedy that occurred. It was terribly unfortunate. I don't think anyone's aware of the complete circumstances that developed, except for the fact that the girl was misdiagnosed. And with the condition that she has, evidently, there's an 80% rate of misdiagnosis. So she has made certain that, the Madam State's Attorney has made sure that in any cases moving forward, that she is going to have an independent specialist, making sure an independent specialist is brought in to make sure that this doesn't happen again under any of these type of circumstances whatsoever. As far as the funding is concerned, I think this council already recognized the fact that we're going to have to come up with the money. We don't expect it to come out of the state's attorney's. We don't expect it to come out of the state's attorney's coffers whatsoever. It's terribly unfortunate, but we recognize it, and it is needed. It has to be addressed. There has to be some type of compensation to that. The only question that I understood, which came out in Maryland Matters and other magazines throughout the state of Maryland, the only real question here was if the state of Maryland heard the appeals process. Gladly so, because now we know, we recognize there was a real problem. But the local jurisdictions aren't given any type of, is a recent law that was just passed, I believe, within the last year, the local jurisdictions aren't given any authority in the appeal process. And yet, the local jurisdictions are required to pay 50% of that. So I think that was the only stickler in this whole process. I don't know whether or not that's going to be addressed at the state level or not. Haven't had enough conversations to know whether it's, whether it's, might be required. But just want to let you know that she was very quick to respond to that. And as, you know, from my perspective, I think she's addressing this as best as anybody could expect. And again, we'll send you a copy of that letter as well.
One last thing, you know, I heard Councilmember Merritt talk about the new title health facility on Church Street. And I was in a meeting yesterday where there was some discussion about the planned center on Morris Street. And it's supposed to mirror that one that's been completed. But also, I heard something about there was, they hadn't really decided on the land that they would be using. I thought the site was already known, and it appears that somehow the, I guess the hospital was in a discussion with the council regarding a piece of property, and that's now not settled. So I'm just, whatever information you can share on that, I'd appreciate it.
So I went to the public meeting on that, and I think the size of the building is as big as it can be for that piece of property. So once that facility is constructed, that's going to be as big, they're not going to be able to expand it because there's not enough property. But that's the way I understood it to be explained.
So additional property may be needed? Is that right, or will they have...
And I don't know if additional property is available. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's not something where the county council had promised property and is no longer providing that?
No, no.
That's not this at all?
I know one concern they had was parking, and it seems, the way it was explained that night at the public meeting, they had that worked out. Citizens were concerned about parking, is it going to be street parking, on-site parking, schools right there, what's that going to look like, the people going in and out? They said they had it all worked out.
Exactly, and I think that what I saw about the center and as well as I saw the, the newspaper actually did a nice little article, and with a number of clips showing the inside of the building and what's all going on there. And something like that is directly needed on the west side, you know, in that area, the proposed area. And so I certainly would encourage the council to do all you can to work with the hospital to make that happen, so that it's a facility very similar, because I, from what I gather, they really want to duplicate that on Morris Street and probably move some of those into some of the outline areas. As the previous discussion we were having, you know, providing certain things here in the Salisbury area, because both of those would be really in Salisbury for the most part. And so people out in some of the outline areas certainly have similar kinds of needs. And as they move forward in trying to address those needs, appreciate all the work the county council could do to help them along and move them along in whatever capacity you can do to make that happen. Thank you, though. Sure.
Thank you.
The last thing that we have, and I noticed the time, we need to discuss, I mean, I can do it right now, but ongoing communication with representatives and the possibility of scheduling regular meetings with constituents as well as meetings with the county executive. So maybe it's something that we can, we can look at, at doing.
I don't see where that is a problem. I mean, I know from, with other council members as well, that we attend quite a few events every week. You know, it isn't just daytime here at the county council chambers. We go to numerous events throughout the year on every, at every section of the county. So we're always open to any type of communication in that regard.
All right, so then the last thing, though, on those communications that you received from the county executive, the state's attorney's office...
State's attorney, yes.
And the first one was...
The Board of Elections.
The Board of Elections. If you could forward those to us, we'd appreciate that.
You'll get those today.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time, and always a pleasure seeing you guys.
Always good, thank you. Next item we have on the works, on the agenda is a new land park landfill, rules and regulations. Mr. Adam Corey is here, and Mr. Mike Sfaby is here as well.
Still get to say good morning.
Yes.
Yep, just a couple more minutes.
Couple more minutes.
Yeah, Adam Corey, Acting Landfill Superintendent, Executive Director of Environmental Services.
Mike Sfaby, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Good to see you both.
Thank you.
We appreciate the information you've supplied to the council. It looks like you've been really working very hard with this, and we appreciate that. And of course, the timeline is very crushed, right? I mean, time's already passed us already with August the 1st, but we do appreciate the hard work in getting this information together. So we'll give you the floor and let you explain to the public exactly.
Certainly. So just bringing everybody back up to speed for the public's consumption, when the emergency legislation was introduced, and we met a few times in July, we had a work session on that. We've talked about this concept about the county trash for quite some time now. Fortunately, we came to an accord on what that legislation would look like for the standpoint of legislation that has violation penalty phase and teeth to it. Well, you know, without putting too much finer of a point on it, I think that that has made a very, very positive impact in our overall traffic into our facility. Our MSW-style trucks, and when I say MSW, again, that's municipal solid waste, and that doesn't necessarily mean it's coming from municipality, it just means it's your regular curbside household garbage. Those style of vehicles are much less prevalent as of the day that that was signed. We have completed inspections for almost every major hauler, and we've captured almost every one of them this far, as far as when I say capture, I mean, make sure we get a variety of not only waste loads, but a variety of the customers that come into our facility. Obviously, we're only into effectively Week Two of full-scale implementation of our inspection protocols and what I supply to the council with our waste load inspection report and our standard operating procedure for how we do that on our site. These are still up for debate, they're still up for tweaking here and there, but so far it looks to be working. Again, the deterrent of the penalty phase has made haulers change routes. We've had very positive feedback from some of those commercial haulers about what they've done. We've been in close conversation with the town of Delmar, for example. Obviously, they've got a very unique situation with having their trash on both sides of the street, you know. Well, the famous, you know, Aunt Gertrude came over for Sunday night's dinner, brought the kids a Christmas present, her Amazon box went in their trash can. Again, that was never the intent of this. We understand we're going to see little pieces here and there, but those whole full loads coming in from Worcester County, Sussex County, and otherwise, those have effectively disappeared, to the best of our knowledge, just based on overall. It has relieved our operations as well. You know, I've been saying since day one, we have a very, very intense operation on our property. When you've got that kind of business, you know, 12 to 15 trucks lined up at 6:45 in the morning, and then that steady flow of traffic all day long, it makes it very difficult to do, it's like a cook in a kitchen. You have a good, the right number of tickets and the right number of staff, you can get everybody's food out hot, good, and ready. When you have too much and that kitchen becomes overwhelmed, things start to fall apart, this is also, that decrease in traffic is helping us put on a better work product at the end of our day, which is good from an environmental standpoint, it's good from a compliance standpoint as well. So with that being said, we are getting pushed back from one specific hauler. Everybody has been very cooperative, providing us manifests. Many of the hauler companies, especially the larger chains, they actually have like iPad-style little devices with the driver. We ask them for the manifest when we do the random inspection, they'll flip, you know, flick through it, show us the addresses, like, all right, that's all, you know, Wycomico County, whatever. So we've been very, very happy about the cooperation we've gotten from every hauler that we've done so far, all except one, who were, just are refusing to answer any questions, provide manifests or any information, which is, that's holding up our ability to process that truck, get it out of there quickly, you know, it'd make it a lot easier if we can see that information. So, you know, I think this goes back to the question we had, or excuse me, the communication that we had previously before the emergency legislation came out was, eventually, we'd like to see this get to a point of a full-blown permitting process, like Delaware has, for example, where it's not a request that's required. You know, you have to present your manifest even across the scales. That would just make it easy. So that's the only hiccup so far, everything else has been going pretty well. You have any questions about the documents?
Yeah.
My question is, what are you seeing in the reduction of revenue coming in?
So again, I want to see good trend analysis over, you know, at least a quarter, but real, even though we had a, because of the increase in the tonnage, excuse me, because of the increase in the tipping fee of $78, even though we had a decrease, when you compare it to 2024s, we still had a higher revenue.
Are you going to see a need to reduce staff?
No, sir, no. That's, you're never going to have a need to reduce staff because the landfill's operations, even though we have a reduction in overall trash, remember, we're always still playing catch-up from the sins of the past, for lack of a better term, and we have to go to horizontal expansion. Not only sell seven, horizontal expansion, and then keep in mind the Waga project with the landfill gas renewable energy, which we had some great conversations at Mako, and Waga was here yesterday to present some more information with us. As we make the landfill more and more excellent, the staff level we've got now will very likely have to increase. Not significantly, but when you have effectively two landfills running at the same time post-closure, I don't see any need for a reduction in staff.
What kind of decrease in revenue are you looking at?
So far, I have not seen a decrease in revenue. It's stabilized out and/or gone up. But again, we've only got effectively, this, this legislation wasn't even signed until the 7th of August, so we, I don't have enough data to show you yet. All I can tell you is when we started to get a reduction in traffic was around July 15th, July 16th. When I compared July 16th to August 1st, August 6th of 2024, there was a decrease in tonnage, but there was an increase in revenue because of the tipping fee being at $78. So so far, no harm done.
Just taking that a step further, and this may be something to look at later on, and I know that the tipping fee has been an issue for quite some time, starting back the end of last year, whatever the case, but I assume that most of your costs are fixed costs. You just made the comment, and I would probably agree, because the tonnage has gone down doesn't necessarily mean that you can reduce, you know, you have to have, I kind of got a picture of that, a certain amount of staff to operate, no matter whether the tonnage is high or low. So my next question would be, at what point in time finance can look at that? Because, you know, as tonnage decreases, then your per-ton cost is going to naturally go up. And to be conscious of that and just looking at that calculation, you know, probably sometime towards the end of this year or whenever, when you've got enough data to substantiate it, but just a, just a thought process.
Very good point.
Yes, sir.
Have you explored reopening either one of the recycling centers that were closed?
No, sir. That hasn't been part of the conversation on this particular part of the legislation, but, I mean, we, we've talked about it before. We've talked about it with Councilman Hastings as well, as far as finding a suitable location in Salisbury, somewhere other than the Civic Center. We're all ears. I think, you know, if we can get another one out there, our MRA numbers are still good, but if we can find a better place to serve the public better, you know, still, we're completely open to that.
You know, we, we do own the property next to the Civic Center.
You talking about Y-Hi's parking lot?
No, I'm talking about the one right next to the Civic Center.
Oh, where the, where the old mall was?
Yes, exactly. And that's relatively isolated. If you look at the property that surrounds the property we own, believe me, nobody's going to think a dumpster is a bad thing to have close to that property, because that's just completely dilapidated.
Yeah.
But it's more isolated, it's more off, and actually, it's open for people to recognize that it's there and to use it, so that could be an option.
Now, run that flag up the flagpole.
Yeah. We appreciate you giving all this information to us. I'm assuming legal's gone through all the inspection reports and everything like that to make sure we're in compliance? Andrew Shaken is...
So, yeah, and again, like I said in my email to Ms. Hurley, this models the vehicle inspection reports that we've been doing for decades...
Right.
For 40 CFR, for Code of Federal Regulations, for hazardous material. There's nothing really any different, and then we just took, I mean, the bits and pieces of the legislation we had of what effectively is very crystal clear, as far as you just can't have out-of-county waste. Again, like you and I have talked about quite a few times, where do you draw the line on what's what? Is that a whole load? I've issued one warning. That's it, one warning. And that was literally the day that it was signed, but we had decided and under, you know, under, under the county executive said, let's give them a week, let this settle in before we give anybody a full-blown penalty. Unfortunately, we haven't had to do that, but on the first day it was signed, we did have a, have a warning. And the gentleman self-admitted, I said, you know, what was your route today? He said, "Snow Hill." I said, "Snow Hill Road?" "No, Snow Hill." So I had a little conversation with his boss, and he goes, "Yeah, we probably should have talked to that dispatcher this morning." So other than that, you know, I'm very happy with it.
So you say you have one company that's giving you some problems supplying information. How long are you going to let that go?
So I've brought it to the attention of the county executive and to the legal department. The, again, the legislation doesn't have anything in it that says they must present. So we're just looking for a cooperative, collaborative process. But we're going to have to address it somehow, because, look, if they're going to dump the load on the, on the floor, when I say the floor, that's where you approach the working phase, we're going to have to take extra time to go through that material. Not to say that you couldn't have a false positive, but for example, if I have one, if I have Company A come in the door, I say to the driver, "We're performing a random, random waste load inspection. Do you have a manifest?" They say, "Yes." "May I look at it?" "Yes." They hand me the manifest. If I see that every stop on his, you know, route is all Wycomico County, I don't really even need to take a look at the waste load. I might, once he drops it, "All right, sounds good, it's all municipal solid waste, call it a day." When I have a hauler that say, that states, "I will not answer whether or not I have a manifest, I will not answer what my route is today, I've been instructed by my superiors not to answer your questions on the hill," I'm going to look through that trash full, full tilt. That's going to hold them up longer, it's going to hold my staff up longer, I really hope that, I hope that changes. Yeah. Holds them up longer as well.
You dump that, in that case, do you dump that in an isolated area?
So one...
So you don't bend over and happen to pick up something that comes from somewhere else?
So whenever we do a random vehicle inspection that's in here, we have to make sure that it's in here as far as random selection, how we spell it out for the staff. And of course, when I say staff, it's effectively myself and my operations supervisor are the only two at this point that are performing inspections, just so I want consistency until we get some other staff trained up. But they got to select the, select the vehicle, check the vehicle, check the surrounds for safety protocol, hit radio to the hill operators that that material's not going to be touched, and we also make sure that we park our vehicle in a certain way so that another hauler's not going to get right next to them and co-mingle the material. So, yeah, we've got it segregated until we've looked at it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that, go ahead, Josh.
What did you say? First of all, it sounds great, you're doing, this is really great to hear. I guess process, in my view, just, I'd like to see us move closer to the permitting side of things that, but I don't know internally what needs to happen on your end, or what the best process in the timeline, and making sure that everyone else is up to date. I know we don't want to move too fast so that haulers feel disrespected, or that they're trying to catch up and they don't know. So what is the timeline on your...
So I think we should have a permit process presented to you in time that we would have it ready by July. would have it ready by July. Okay, that way we would have our, it, it doesn't have to go by that calendar, it could go by the October calendar too, but we're a little too close this year. In an ideal situation in my mind would be that you have a permit process that starts July 1, right? We, Department, uh, excuse me, Delaware Solid Waste Authority has come down and met with me now twice. They've provided me their full packet of permitting. They even gave me one of the nice stickers. I'm gonna put it on the back of my truck and see if anybody catches me, uh, coming into landfill this weekend. No, I'm just kidding. But, uh, you know, they, they have a, they run an extremely tight ship. Um, haulers, when, when we, you know, we engage with our haulers every day. We, we, we speak with them, you know, some great conversations up on the hill. They know better. They, they really do. They're not gonna try to pull into, and when you do, it's gonna be the random. It's not gonna be your, your reputable chain or local owned business. It's gonna be some narrative well that's gonna roll up in there with a dual-axle dump trailer and say, yeah, this is from Sussex County. They don't mess around up there. And I'd, I'd like to have it like that, but the information that we need to present to council, the, again, notification out to the hauler community that this may be coming in, you know, July maybe, I think that was, uh, it'd be a reasonable timeline. Yeah. Yes, sir. Okay.
I would, I mean, are you saying be July because that's when they renew their permits?
Well, right now, we don't have a quote-unquote permit, you know what I mean? They, they have, we have a surety bond process for them to open a credit account if they wanna do that across the scales instead of having to pay each time. Um, but it, it's at the will of the council, and I think, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Illuminati, but me and him have been working on this in the background even prior to the most recent legislation. So, it wouldn't be too big of a task to stand it up.
I think the more that we can just be transparent and everyone feels, knows what's coming, I think that's, that's where we've had challenges in the past, but I think that makes total sense. I would love for Wycomico County to be known as a running tight ship.
Yep. And Cecil County, Maryland, has a very similar situation to, uh, the permitting process for Delaware, so it's not unheard of. Yep.
Would it be necessary to, to maybe do a, you, you gave us the three papers. One was the standard operating procedure and the inspection report and the notice of the violation. Uh, would it be onerous to maybe hand out the mod, the modified standard operating procedure? That would be modified maybe for an outside entity to review it, as opposed to, you know, you know, within the county itself?
Oh, like-
Or you could leave it as is. However you-
Yeah, like if we, if we decided to modify this, certainly, but we eventually wanna make it a permanent SOP.
Understood.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is that you would, you would maybe make copies of these three-
And pride it out.
And hand, be handing them out to these people when they're coming in, say, here's what you need to expect the next time you come in. I don't know how many people are gonna be coming in on a regular basis where you feel, because it could be, it could be more than we wanna get into.
So, that's where a permit, a full-blown true permit hauler thing would make it a lot easier, because now, if you, if you are signing to become a permit he, then you are effectively agreeing to our terms and conditions before we issue it to you. So at that point, you're, you're made aware fully. But this right here, until we get to that point, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, as long as I get, give me about two more weeks of play to make sure this is appropriate, and we have, we don't run into any issues with it, it's just public information, I'll put it out there for everybody.
Yeah, just letting them know that from now on, you know, you can expect this the next time you come in or something like that.
Sure. And, and the cool thing is, again, this is very, very similar to our, uh, the ones that we've been doing for decades, the, the CFR for hazard material. It's almost identical. The only difference being is that now we don't say random vehicle inspection for VIR, now we say we're doing a waste load inspection, blah, blah, blah. We let them know that we will be using audiovisual recordation of this, of the inspection, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
There's not much else different. Yeah.
Right.
So as we, as we move through changes like this, you know, one challenge we've always had, and I think we've done better in the last six to eight months than ever, is addressing the universe of who is affected by the change, right? And, and we think we put out invitations, public notices, we think we have the universe of people, and then we find out, well, someone never heard about it or what have you. The upside of the waste hauler's permit concept is it allows you to identify that universe. You know everybody that would be legally expected to come and use a landfill. So, anytime a change is addressed, change of a holiday, change of something in, in the tenure solid waste plan, change of something in the procedure, you'd be able to address that group and have confidence you're, you're sharing it with everybody.
Yeah. Any, I don't think there are any more questions at all? No?
So just, I'm sorry, Mr. Merrick.
Just real quick, because of what we've done, is Worcester and Somerset now doing the same thing? They're, they're not accepting out-of-county waste?
So Worcester County, they were standing on, even before we got to this point with coming forward to you with the emergency legislation and all that, right? They were standing on the same premise that we did, that our solid waste refuse disposal permit says you're an in-jurisdictioned landfill, and they were not accepting out-of-county waste because of it. The whole state's operated like that. The, you know, again, that's where they were operating on, so they were just saying no, flat out, not gonna happen. Um, until I got my mind wrapped around how big of an issue it was for our county, we've known it's been going on. I, you know, previous superintendents and directors of public works and deputy directors of public works have sat right here years ago and said the very same thing. So, it's just, we never, we never said, here's a line in the sand, you're not crossing anymore. So, but Worcester County, for example, are, they're seeing an increase in traffic, appropriately so, because the material that was going to us is going to them now. So, you know, it's working out. It's working out. I don't think they're being overwhelmed either, which is good, but I don't think they can have their guys taking naps anymore. No, I'm just kidding. No, they're good guys down there. We work very closely with them.
Good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We're going to, uh, take a recess for lunch. Uh, we'll be back. What, what time is the, um-
12:30.
12:30? Thought we were doing better than that. So we're gonna take a-
Yeah.
We'll have a recess until 12:30. Reconvening as the Wycomico County Council in Legislative Session 2025-16 for August 19, 2025. First item on our open work session, we're glad to have with us the Board of Education.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Pleasure to be here today.
Yes. If you could, from left to right.
Sure.
Let the public-
Your left?
That you hear. You can pick whichever you choose. Gene, when it comes to you.
He said left.
Whatever you choose.
Gene Malone, Chairman of Wycomico County Board of Education, and also have with me our Vice Chairman, Mr. David Platts.
Thank you. Mike, Mike Stoffer, Superintendent of Schools, and we also have our Chief Finance Officer, Jesse Reed, with us in the audience.
Brian Rigger, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Miles, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Services.
Rick Briggs, Chief Academic Officer.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you again for having us today. Um, as you can see, it is a lengthy agenda. I believe all but two are, uh, requests from the County Council, uh, today, so we'll make sure that we cover each one of those items for you. Always wanna make sure that we, uh, have time for questions, so please, uh, ask those as we go along. And again, it's always nice to have the opportunity. We're just about ready to embark on a new school year. As I know you know, the '25, '26 school year, time is flying. Uh, so we've been very busy over the summer, making sure that all of our, uh, positions are filled, uh, making sure that all of our professional development and training's done over the summer. So a lot of hiring, a lot of training, a lot of things going on. We also set our priorities for the school year, so we're gonna continue moving, uh, down the path. We have five priorities in Wycomico County Public Schools, uh, making sure that we have, uh, safe schools. Uh, so school safety and climate is our, our first priority. Student achievement is also something that we work towards, uh, each and every day. Student engagement, making sure that we also have a high-performing workforce, and that we have family and community involvement. So those are the priorities that we have, uh, centered around today. Also wanna start by saying I understand that there were, there was a comment during public comments earlier in your meeting today, so we will make sure that we follow up with that person so we can get more information, more details, because that was the first that we had heard anything about it from our, uh, leadership here, uh, in front of you today. So we, we didn't have any information on that. So we'll make sure that we follow up with that individual and get more information, uh, because it sounds like that there's some serious concerns. We wanna make sure that the proper authorities and others are notified, uh, once we look into that. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that as well.
Thank you.
And then obviously, I always have a great team, uh, with me each and every time that we are able to come forward. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to them as we go into the number two on the agenda. But I think, um, just wrapping up the first item there, as far as the priorities for this school year, we are giving you the five priorities, but within that, school climate and safety, we're working hard, uh, to make sure that we're adding what we call layers of intervention in our school system. And I think for a long time, uh, we, uh, whether it was through the budget process, priorities that we had, uh, in front of us each year as we went forward, um, for a while, we did not continue to add various layers of intervention for student discipline, uh, for student intervention, uh, you know, as we move forward, and that's a big focus for us right now. Um, so as we look at that pre-K now through 12th grade, we wanna make sure that we have all of the layers, all of the programs, uh, within each one of those grade levels, so that we can, uh, address the student discipline concerns, uh, that we may see, uh, in the classroom and in the school, so that we can address, uh, the school climate as a whole, and that we can make sure that the behavioral support, the mental health support that we're offering our students, uh, will always lead back to the same thing, and that's student achievement, success in the classroom. That's why we're there, and that's what we do as a school system. So, you'll see and hear a lot about that from, from Wycomico County Public Schools. So we're adding those programs, separate programs beyond the, the regular classroom in each one of the schools to address some of the concerns that we're seeing, uh, with mental health, with behavioral health and other things as we move forward. So that's one big focus that we have. Uh, student engagement, as you know, um, from the, the support from the Wycomico County Education Foundation and also from Pahanka, we were really able to add middle school sports and some engaging opportunities for our middle school students. We see the success that we have in the high schools. Uh, we see the success that we have with not only sports, but fine arts, uh, not only fine arts, but some of the programs, obviously like CTE, uh, which is a wonderful program that leads to high success in student achievement in high school. So we're taking that and moving that into our earlier grade levels to give students those engaging opportunities, whether it's on the playing field or in the, you know, on the stage in the auditorium, or, uh, maybe some type of program that they're working with in, in their school that's of interest to them. So, you'll hear about us, um, doing that and then adding programming to our middle schools and even into our intermediate grades in fourth and fifth grades as we move forward. So those are some of the priorities that we have in our school system that I think that you will hear a lot more about as we move forward into this particular school year. Any questions on that?
The, um, you mentioned the CTE-
Yes.
Program. I guess we could get that into more detail as we go through, but, uh, that is, seems to be the real, first of all, the, the sports initiative I thought was great. That's, that's been so successful, successful. I'm glad to see that it's working out so well. Um, with the, um, CTE programs, um, that seems to be like a really hot button from across the country now. That's, that's what be, is being emphasized.
Yeah.
Do you think as far as locally is concerned, that we're accelerating our CTE program enough to, um, to meet the needs?
Absolutely. I think first and foremost, we're very blessed to have the level of CTE program that we've had for a long time. And I think for a long time, we were, uh, heads and shoulders above everybody else, um, around the state, honestly. Um, not only from the leadership in our program, but just because of the instructors that we have and the programs and how, how successful they were, uh, with the students that we had in those programs. Um, I think the state is now realizing what we've known for a long time in Wycomico, how important career and technical education is, and, and how important that is not only for the larger community, uh, but also for the interest and engagement of students and learning, because, you know, they're not all gonna go to necessarily straight into college. Some may go into college later, some may go into a two-year school, a, a program that will train them further beyond high school. Um, some may go straight into the trade, uh, but that's something that, uh, we've known for a long time and, and expanded around that, and really used the community to help inform us of what programs to offer. Also think that there's room for growth here in Wycomico County as well. Um, now, when you're starting to talk about growth, we have maximized the space at Parkside. Um, so beyond a very expensive, uh, addition to that school, uh, we're trying to grow CTE programs within all of the high schools. So we've added to our business programs. Uh, JRTC has become under the, um, CTE umbrella, which is now at Y-Hi. We've expanded the nursing program that is at, uh, Parkside and added another instructor there. You know, in recent years, we've added to the project Lead the Way or the Pre-Engineering Program, and it added an instructor for that. So, we're working to not only expand in, in ways at Parkside, but also expand out into the schools. And most recently, we're excited about, um, programs that we've added to evening high school, and those are certification programs that our students are involved in, that are attending the evening high school that we have, uh, there on the Parkside campus as well. And another way that we're expanding a little bit differently is to add out into our businesses. So what we call apprenticeships, where we have students that are still under the CTE umbrella, but may not go through the specific programs, those three-year programs, um, but they're still gaining certifications by working with businesses. And I think there's 23 now, uh, that we have that we're partnered with through Parkside, where these apprenticeships are happening, and our students are going out all into, across the, the county, into different businesses, uh, to gain those certifications and those credentials once they graduate high school. So, it's not just about adding new programs and new classrooms and new space and a big addition to Parkside. We're truly, really trying to be creative in how we do that.
James?
Yeah. Um, first off, yeah, I was actually in one of those apprenticeship programs, and, uh, they're great. It's a great way for somebody to expand and get serious into a trade. It's awesome. But I, uh, I was asking about, uh, that you, you do a Next Gen, um, that program? I just, I, I went to one of the, uh, was it, I went to one of the cleanups at the zoo, and I just wanna say that that is an awesome program. Um, the kids there really wanted to be there, and they did a, my opinion, they did a good job. Like, for cleaning up a zoo, like they could've just sat around, but no, those kids were running for getting the rakes, dumping the materials and running back and forth and trying to get the job done. And, uh, I just wanted to let you all know that I did go to that program. I was invited by some of the teachers there, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure I relayed that.
Yeah, thank you. And that's, that's, um, so that's one of our middle school programs we're really proud of.
Yeah.
And, um, that's another area that we are expanding into. So we have, we've had Next Gen STEM at Salisbury Middle for a long time, and to complement that, we now also have a business and entrepreneurship at Y-Middle, uh, a program, uh, there, what we call signature programs. We also have a broadcast media program at, at Bennett Middle School, and we are also adding a new fine arts, uh, pilot program at Wycomico Middle School. So, um, we've gone from one program, um, for quite a while to now, just in the last couple of years, four programs. Um, so that's getting them into, because we, we, those are the things, like I said, we see working at the high school level so well, so it makes sense to try to capture our students, um, before that even, they even get to that level when they're in the middle school. Yeah, thank you.
Have any interactions with Senator Caroza?
Mm-hmm. Very much so. She, I actually have a meeting coming up with her a little bit, uh, soon, in a couple of weeks, and those are the kinds of questions. She's been a champion for us when it comes to CTE programming. Yeah, thank you. All right. Number two, I believe, shift in education responsibilities from federal to state government. You know, Brian has some comments, and then see, see what questions-
Give us the good news.
Well, you hear a lot of news about the federal government looking at potentially shutting down Department of Education. So I'm assuming the question is coming from how that might impact us. I'd say most of our interface with the Federal Department of Education comes in the form of a number of grants that we get. Special education funding, well, what we call the Title Grants, and those refer to the major, the titles or the major sections of the Federal, um, Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Uh, most recent, recent reauthorization, people refer to it as the Every Student Succeeds Act. We have four Title Grants that we get. Title one is for, um, providing services for students from poverty. Title two focuses on teacher professional development. Title three focuses on our multilingual students, and Title four focuses on well, providing well-rounded opportunities for students as well as, uh, safe and healthy student programs. Those, although they're federal dollars, they do come through the state. So if the, if that money would be, as, as we hear potentially happening from the Trump administration, shifting those funds directly to states, uh, would depend on how MSE, the- state level decided the structure, but currently, we work through the states now. We complete applications every year to receive those funds to MSE. We don't send it directly to the federal. We send it to MSE, they get the funds, and then grant it out to the locals. So at this point, a lot is unknown, but we do know already that our interface for accessing those federal funds is already through the state. So we don't necessarily see a big change, but there's, you know, a lot of detail still yet to come out. Any questions on that? Okay.
Thank you. Next item, school security update.
Okay. So I actually left a lunch and learn session with probably about 20 or so emergency services personnel with our school safety team, just bringing everyone into the conversation and making sure all those who support our schools are aware of what's happening. These are ongoing conversations. So I told them I apologize for leaving, but I got to have the opportunity to spend my afternoon with the county council, and that safety was one of our topics. So they like that. As far as security update, we do continue with our 12 SROs. That includes two SROs dedicated solely to our elementary schools. And we, I'm going to go through a list of things, and then if I miss anything that you have a question about at any point, please let me know. Our Metrisens, those are the units that if you attended a commencement or graduation, you walked through them to be able to come in. We do have the 11 units. We are continuing to look for funding to increase that number. We have trained all campus security team members. We've trained those administrators involved and other school staff, because these units have to have human support to be able to be utilized. So we've got a good, good process in place. These have been utilized, like I mentioned, in the commencements as well, that you'll see them at the county stadium this year. If you go for a football game on a Friday night, hope you will, and at other fall sports and other events, and then randomly throughout the county, so, or throughout the school system. The virtual weapons detection, we have recently entered into contract. We will be working with an entity that works on the external areas of our schools and our buildings, and it's through our camera system, and it is a sensitive system that identifies weapons coming in the direction of the school with an immediate emergency response plan already in place for how that person carrying that would be addressed so that a weapon would not make it into the school. So more to come on that. We're not going to put a list out there of where they are and when they're operating because we just want to have, you know, the element of surprise for someone. We don't want them to bring it at all. I heard Dr. Stauffer mention this before. We're focusing on the layered approach. We're looking at the outside of the buildings, as I just mentioned. We're looking at the entrances of the buildings. We have the protective film on all of the lower story windows. We have the units that lock the doors automatically, and you have to fob to get in, you have to be allowed to enter at multiple stages. We have the campus security teams and security managers, I'm going to mention that in just a moment, and then we have ongoing training with a school safety team established in every school, and they're working with our two Safe Schools coordinators. So a lot that's happening, because there is no one solution, and safety is a very broad area, and we're approaching it from many different directions. I did mention our campus security teams. These are in all secondary schools. In every high school, we have a campus security manager, and in our high and middle schools, we have campus patrol. What is even adding to the excitement of this is the fact that all of these personnel are trained and certified through Maryland Center for School, for Safe Schools. They are above and beyond the positions for which they are hired. They go through the professionally designed training that is for school security personnel. And happy to say that all of our team members that were with us last year have been trained, and those joining us this year will be trained and certified as well.
Do you say it's a patrol?
We have campus, campus patrol, three in each middle school, four in each high school, and our high schools have an additional position of campus security manager, kind of helping those teams work in collaboration with administration as well as SROs. The role and responsibility is to be throughout the building, throughout the campus, to ensure that there's safety in passage, there's safety between classes, there's safety in all areas of the buildings. Very, very.
Volunteer group, or is it like paid security?
I'm sorry?
Is it like a volunteer group, or is it?
No, these are, these are FTE. These are paid positions with the training. We initially began with training through our Safe Schools team, which was very beneficial, and then extended to Maryland Center for School Safety to have them certified as school safety personnel.
Are they uniformed, or are they just?
They are not.
So they're, oh, not got center.
Yes. They look like, they're dressed like the other staff. Might get them some cool shirts this year, but they're not going to wear them every day. So they're dressed like the other staff, and it's really been very well received, and we hope to have opportunities in the future to expand those teams. But they're very, very well received. Actually expanding one of their resources this year, where they will be working with a program that has them checking all external doors on a regular process, a regular schedule, checking all bathrooms, and it's just adding to that focus of safety in every area of the school.
Has that become routine throughout other jurisdictions, that process or that program?
One I just mentioned about checking the.
The patrols, I'm sorry.
The patrols. It, I can't say that it's in all systems, but we felt the need and identified it and developed our own position, looking at a couple other systems, whether in Maryland or outside of Maryland, and went from there. So we hope to be a model.
And I was going to say, we're still working with Sheriff Lewis and his team. So I know as he's continued to try to, he's struggled and said that publicly, they're still trying to find, you know, sheriff deputies to be able to fill their own vacancies, let alone expand. They did a great job in helping us get two additional deputies into our school system. I think eventually, we would certainly have made it public that we would like to have more of them, but in the meantime, we've also, out of necessity maybe, as much as anything, wanted that personnel. So instead of relying solely on sheriff deputies, we've started looking at these campus security managers and then a team of campus patrol, or sometimes two or three individuals that work with that campus security manager, and all of them work together with the SRO, the deputy in the building. So you think of it as a team now of five, certainly not, you know, uniformed or carrying a weapon, but there are so many things they can do with interacting with students, checking bathrooms, doing hall checks, doing security checks, looking at cameras, checking exterior doors, monitoring students, accompanying students from the classroom to the office, those kinds of things. So it's really added a lot to our overall security in the building. So Kim has done a great job with her team in setting that whole operation up, as opposed to just relying solely on, you know, going from 10 deputies to 12 deputies, and then eventually going from 12 maybe to 15 or whatever. We're still very interested in that, and we'll pursue that, but in the meantime, we're approaching it from this way.
Another thing, we do have the addition of a second Safe Schools coordinator this year, and I look at what these two coordinators are doing, and they are nonstop, and I'm wondering how we ever got it done with one, because the needs are so intense. But we are very fortunate to have two awesome people in these positions, and they are constantly working with a focus on the facilities aspect of security, on the personnel aspect of security, detailing for elementary, detailing for secondary. So I just share that to give you full assurance that there's a lot of energy, a lot of directed energy, and a lot of very specific focus in the areas of safety and security across all of our campuses.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Capital projects.
Yeah, under capital projects, you'd ask about two in particular, but I'll share some other updates as well. First and foremost, Mardella Middle High School Project is just about complete. All classrooms, offices, interior spaces will be open to students and staff for the coming, coming school year. I just drove by there over the weekend. The site work is nearly complete, front parking lot, bus ramp, parent drop-off areas. Be a much safer environment for students arriving and departing school, because we're separating the buses and don't have students crossing that bus lane to get to their cars or the parent cars. School looks beautiful. If you had a chance to go by, it looks great, and we will be planning a rededication ceremony sometime a little later during the school year, and certainly would look forward to inviting you to attend that as well.
Because at a chamber event, there's a young girl there who is helping assist, and just in conversation, I said, what grade are you in? She goes 10th, 10th grade, and I said, where do you go to school? She goes, Mardella. And she goes, it's fantastic. Yeah, I said, does it, I says, is it more, is it more fun? She goes, it's so much, so nice going to the class, and she said, and all the teachers love it. All the teachers are so, so much nicer. The atmosphere is just great for everybody who's there. And she, she pointed out, it's not just the kids, but it's the teachers that were loving it. And I know that's what you all had said during capital discussions that we had, that would make education more, it would make it fun, and it'd make it enjoyable, and it would be more productive. And that's what I got from her 100%.
That's good.
Yeah, on both sides.
Makes a huge difference, the natural lighting and just the openness of the building.
Oh, man.
The colors that they put in, just the little things like that makes such a huge difference, and just improves the attitude, I think, especially going from the old building to the new building. There were certainly were hiccups as they were working during construction. It was an occupied construction, so kind of separating, using fences and so forth, separating construction from instruction. That went off all with, without anything other than some minor hiccups. So we're looking forward to having that behind us and having full access to the building. Couple punchless things we'll be working on, of course, like any new building, but nearly complete.
I was going to add, give Mrs. Ashby and her entire team credit. It's a very, it was a very difficult project, and I don't think Brian and Lisa would say enough, but I'll, I'll say that how difficult that is, because, you know, Beaver Run, not that that was easy, but you're building a brand-new school while the students are still going to the old school, and you're building it behind that. Fruitland Primary will be the same way. But when you're constantly, and that, again, Mrs. Hastings, principal at Mardella, deserves a lot of credit as well, but that was a difficult project for a number of years where, you know, it's an occupied, as they say, complete renovation in addition to that school, and 20, I think, maybe portable classrooms, and students and grade levels and classrooms are constantly rotating through as they're working on one area, and then they get done one area, and they go into that area, and then students from another area have to move out, and the track, you know, that was done before the school was there. So it just limited the flexibility that Mrs. Ashby and her team had in trying to work around all of that, but they did a wonderful job, and it's come out really nice, really nice.
Is there any kind of a grand opening or ribbon cutting for it?
There's going to be a rededication, yes, of the whole school. It will, we'll be sending invitations out to everyone on the council, make sure that all of you are included. That'll be coming up this school year.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Just, I guess as a Mardella grad, I just want to say, I'm very proud of you guys. It looks really awesome. I can't wait to actually attend the grand opening. But, and my brother teaches there, I think as many of you may know. I've heard from him and others that they're really excited overall. I'm the only, I know he doesn't have a classroom. I don't know if there's a whole lot of others who don't have a classroom, but regardless, I'm excited that, you know, that this is going forward. Looks like everyone who's, the students that I've talked to, the folks in the community I grew up with, you know, and my, and all the rest of educators, they seem to be really stoked, so great, great job on that.
Thank you.
The next big project is Dr. Stauffer mentioned, the Fruitland Primary. Any of you were present for the groundbreaking back in June. I drove by there last Friday, and a lot of work has been done. It's surprising to see how close it is to the building, but it'll be like that Beaver Run project. We'll be constructing the new building while everything goes on as normal in the current building for the next two years. Looking to move into that building in fall of '27, and then have another number of months to a year to complete the site work and parking lot as we demo the old building and prepare that area for parking. So full steam ahead, we're on schedule. Right now, doesn't look like much, a lot of dirt being compacted. We expect to see some steel going up in the coming months. Other, just a recap on some other capital improvement work over the last year. Parkside High School has Phase Two of its roof. It's a two-phase project. Initially, we looked at it being a three-phase project, but the, the company that won the bid, CMR, fashioned it as a two-year project and were able to get that done. I'll be running probably a little bit into the first couple of days of school, but we'll limit any interaction, won't be any issue impacting instruction. So we're excited to have that done in two years. Also, at Parkside, we're doing a renovation of the downstairs toilet room closest to the gymnasium, the one that gets the most traffic, not only during the day, but also with public events for the auditorium and the gymnasium. It was shown its age, being from 1972 or '73, and looking forward to having that redone. Glen Avenue, we're really excited to be finishing up a couple of years of work at Glen Avenue. This summer, the work is on sprinklers and interior doors, as we had that open classroom area in the back part of the building. We had done some walls in there, but we couldn't put the doors in until we had the fire suppression done, so that's being done this summer as well as those doors. So the teachers will have, be able to shut a door, which will be a really big thing. As a former classroom teacher, I can tell you, it's nice sometimes to cut that noise out from outside. And also a bus canopy at Glen Avenue to make it a little bit nicer on a day like today with the raining, the students coming into the building. Chipman Elementary, doing some interior doors and hardware, doing the same kind of interior door and hardware at Pinehurst Elementary. Shoemaker Complex, that's the relocatable set of buildings beside Parkside. We use that during the daytime for our newcomer center for multilingual high school students. We use it for evening high school as well, gets a lot of use, very limited bathrooms in that building, so we're adding some bathroom capacity in Shoemaker Complex.
Where exactly is that?
That is, if you're coming down Beaglin Park from, from Route 50 towards Parkside, it'll be on your left. It's just before Parkside on the same campus, so across, directly across from the Ward Museum.
Oh, okay, all right.
It blends in pretty nicely, but it was initially placed there when we did some of the renovating renovations inside of Parkside, above the ceiling renovations, because we had to do that as a staged occupy, so we had different classrooms.
You're not talking about where that house is, where the bus lot is, are you? It's right behind that. As you're looking at it from the road, it would be right behind that, towards, further back towards the baseball field.
Okay, where all those portables are now?
That is, the Shoemaker Complex is the portable complex. So it's actually, it's a lot of portable, it's one building, they're all connected in.
Oh, okay, okay. I always wondered what that actually was. I went there, and I was like, man, they've expanded a lot. I was there.
It was first stage occupancy for the reno, and then we're making great use of it now with those two other programs. And Y High, looking forward to getting out of there. I'm sorry.
Just real quick on that note, I guess, I mean, making ass, and I apologize if I bring this earlier, but I've had, I was literally in a conversation on Sunday about this. Parkside, that was the last high school we've, we actually built, right? I mean, as far as a new high school.
As an additional building.
Yeah, additional building. And I'm assuming that, you know, that's 50 years ago, '75, I think it was.
It's either this year.
This year.
Have, we've since added 46,000 people to the county. Are we adding a fifth high school? I mean, or, or has the capacity that we've built when we rebuilt these other high schools?
We've increased capacity since that time, so the new James and Bennett High School has increased capacity. We've added, of course, the CTE wings at, at Parkside, which added capacity, because there are rooms there as well that we use for some general education. Of course, we've added relocatables at Y High. So it's, it's something that we would consider. At this point, we're not, our high schools are at state rate of capacity or just done there, so something that we would monitor as we look at.
What we, where we see the next new school, maybe to the overall repertoire of our, of our schools, where we have 24 schools, the 25th school, I think what we see would be an in-town elementary school.
That's where, have much more capacity issues with this, as in-town's elementaries. Yeah. Finally, then Y High, we've had work on, on the roof there with HVAC and new roof over the last three years, four years, three years for the roof. So that will be completed, as well as an athletic storage building and upgrading fire alarms at Y High. So our planning and construction team, can't give them enough credit, they've been working really hard the last couple of years, this summer as well. The roofing projects, we had the additional wrinkle this year with the new state regulations on heat acclimation and heat safety, right, on days where we reach different levels of heat, then we have to provide breaks for workers. So with the roofing crew, it gets pretty hot up there, and they've been working hard, starting early to try to avoid some of that heat and getting us done so we can be in those buildings when the after Labor Day.
I was talking the last few years about the state and down from the federal government, with the state having to make sure that the buildings are, of all the environmental procedures. That's obviously, I guess, lack, going to be lack, more lax than it was in the past. Do you see any changes in that, or are we still, is the state still moving forward with what I would call those encumbrances?
We're looking at a couple of things. We're looking at potentially having to go for new construction, going all-electric in a couple of years. So you know the next major school on our, in our capital proj- So you know the next major school on our, in our capital project is the, would be Y Middle. So we're looking at how can we time that in light of the forward funding required for Fruitland Primary and the, and the phasing of state? How can we time getting that project, beginning to get planned, so that we can take advantage of opportunities that exist now versus what may be available in, in the future? We, you know, got that $2.1 million grant to do net zero at Fruitland Primary and install solar panels. It, it was a great project at no cost to our county. That's gonna meet some of the new state regs as well. But those are things that may be up in the air at both the state and federal level in terms of changing environmental regulations. So we're monitoring that, seeing how it's gonna impact us, where we are in current projects as well as those coming up in the future. Good question, thank you.
About the traffic pattern at Mardella, has it changed now that the portables have?
Yes. Yeah, so we have, we're separating buses from faculty and students' parking as well as student drop-off to make that a lot safer. If you drive to the school and you come to the front, you'll see a bus canopy coming out, facing the, facing the school, coming up from the left, that will, so you can see where the bus drop-off will be. So yeah, it's gonna be a lot safer. We're not gonna have students crossing in front of buses who are trying to leave.
Nice, thank you. Mrs. Miles?
School policy regarding ICE, so please always keep in mind that our responsibility as a school system is to foster equitable access to education for all students. We are under the responsibility within that, FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act with regard to student records, and then the Code of Maryland, COMAR 13A0802, which is in relation to access to student information. What is most important to keep in mind is that we have a board-approved visitor policy and a procedure. And that, along with the alignment with COMAR and all other regulations associated, indicates that there are public areas of a school that you do not go past unless you were given permission and/or approval. That said, if someone comes to the office, regardless of who that person may be, and they ask to see a child or demand to see a child, unless that person is on the contact list provided by the parent or legal guardian, that person does not have contact. If there are any questions when someone comes to the school to access a child and that answer that I just gave you doesn't sit well with them, or they, they think there should be a different one, our administrators are trained and we will be retraining again this year and supporting. They send the information directly to me. I am the point of contact, and I will be the person who will be able to address any questions or concerns. That is the overall policy procedure approach. The bottom line is, no one gets to a child unless they're approved to get to a child. And that is how our schools function. We know there are legal responsibilities, and if that comes into question, I never pretend to be an attorney, but I do know how to call one really, really quick if I have a question and get the support that's needed. So business as always in our schools, and I'll, I'll take that back to safety and security. No one gets to a student without authority and responsibility and approval. So please keep that in mind when those questions come up. Now, we encourage, anytime you get a question on that, please feel free to share with the person that they can contact me for further information.
Thank you for clarifying that, that there was, there was an incredible amount of misinformation at the end of the last school year on social media.
There was. And I, I appreciate you using the term misinformation, that's exactly what it was.
That's exactly what it was.
Yes.
Yeah.
When that comes up, give me a call.
Thank you.
So if the sheriff's deputy comes to, for some reason, to, I guess, talk to a child or?
Well, beyond the, the scope of ICE, as, as the original topic indicated, there are protocols in place in law that require with a judicial warrant, there are certain actions that are to be taken if a student is in the engagement of law enforcement as a victim, that is one thing. As a perpetrator, there's a different protocol, and as a witness, there's a third protocol. Each of those protocols have their own direction involving the notification of parent or legal guardian, and at what point in time, and what type of access is provided. So that's why we make our administrators aware of the differences and the variances and how things are handled. We don't expect them to always remember that. I hope they don't have to exercise it, but when they do, I ask that they contact me, and then I will work with them, with my team, to make sure they're given the correct direction, because we want to be in accordance with the law, and we also want to ensure a safe environment in our schools.
Also, just want to say to my knowledge, and I think from us talking about it quite often, we have not had any interaction in schools with ICE or not had any contact. There's not been any inquiries. So there, you know, certainly have the policies, and Kim and her team do a great job of informing the administrators of what they are, but we've not had any, any issues at this point in time.
I would also add, if I may, just one more comment. If you're Googling and want to Google MarylandPublicSchools.org, there's an entire section that gives parents, legal guardians, advice, and gives school direction, and works within the parameters of the law. So lots of resources, as recently as February 13th of '25, our state superintendent sent direction to our schools through our superintendent. So there's a lot of communication to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the right reason.
Alright.
Okay, next topic, funding issues or disruptions from state and federal levels. I think this comes primarily from a letter that was received by state superintendents of school back in March from the, the Secretary of Education that indicated that despite the Federal Department of Education giving another year to spend out COVID funds at extension, they were effectively basically immediately canceling that, and there was going to be no more reimbursement to, for us, in our case, reimbursement for expenses under, that were planned to be reimbursed from our COVID funds. For us, you'll recall that we spent most of our COVID funds on capital projects, unlike a lot of districts in Maryland. That put us in a really good place because most of our COVID funds were spent by that time. We had about a million dollars that were in limbo. There were other counties that were in the tens of millions, and it was a much bigger concern. It was a concern for us, wasn't going to be something we couldn't overcome. It was much larger concern than other districts. For us, it was about a million dollars or so that we held in retainage from two of the HVAC projects. And the retainage, just money we're holding to make sure any punchless items, anything gets cleared up and everything's functioning as needed. Thankfully, that money was then released, and, and we were able to get that reimbursement. So it's, it's become a non-issue, was something, was a big issue for a few moments and then got cleared up relatively quickly. We're very pleased to see, and we're able to move on and close those projects out as we had originally. Next topic, the private pre-K and MOE calculations. What I think this comes from is the, the implementation of Blueprint, which called for a vast expansion of pre-K. We do K to 12. We have historically offered pre-K on a relatively small scale. Blueprint called for a massive expansion of pre-kindergarten to provide these earlier educational opportunities for students. It's a good thing, but you're basically adding another grade level. There's a lot behind that in terms of funding, perhaps capital things as well as staffing. As the law was written, because of that, some of those difficulties for an LEA to provide both the space and personnel, the law was written to allow private providers to provide some of those pre-K services and receive government funding to support that. Helps us out by taking some of that load off of us, gives parents some additional opportunities to take advantage of. We have three providers in the county that, three private providers. Two relatively small, and then Warwick is the largest one. I think there are about 40 or so students. As the law was written, it said the state, MSE, would pay the state share of that funding to the private, to the private schools, and the county would fund the local share. There was a misinterpretation by MSE for FY25 that had LEAs paying that private share. So we did. There was a lot of back and forth. I think you had some of the correspondence between both MAKO as well as MAB and PZAM, these Board of Education and Superintendent of State Associations, and MSE, clarifying that and saying that for FY26, they would do what the law was intended, what the law stated, that that charge is paid by the county. So it's not part of our MOE, it wasn't part of our MOE to begin with, but it did shift that to come from the county. Any, any questions I can help you with? It was, was a confusion at the MSE, it was a confusion for us in the way it was implemented. It's now the way that was initially intended. I can't speak for how that was communicated to counties, because MSE had that charge.
And I think it's, it's worth repeating that, you know, a lot of things that have come out from the Blueprint for Maryland's Future have been positive things. I think for the education and for the overall community across Maryland. But they're not easy things. You know, when you can easily say, well, you added another grade level, we added, you know, pre-K. But that's, that's 850 students. That's between 40 and 50 classrooms. It's probably like a building the size of Parkside that we just absorbed into our school system like that. That's a lot, with all the staff, the space, the instruction, the materials on it. I mean, plus they're four-year-olds, right? So all the training that goes in with that and, and everything like that. So we do appreciate, we don't have, being more rural, we don't have a lot of private providers, because there's a lot of, I don't wanna say hoops, but there's just a lot of regulations and requirements that they have to go through in order to, to fall under the state's blueprint umbrella. But the ones that we do have have been tremendous assets for us for that. But that's, that's just one small piece of, of the larger overall, you know, adding pre-K as a new grade level, like we've done over the last few years.
Just a reminder about numbers, like I mentioned, 800 plus. So we have seats for 100, excuse me, 840 pre-K for students. But you gotta keep in mind also, we have about a little over 1,100 students per grade level on average. So there's over 250 students, four-year-olds, that we're not able to serve. And that's why that need for private providers to step up is so great.
Thank you. Alright, Mrs. Miles, back to you.
Back to me. So the general status of discipline in my Comoco County Public Schools. So initially, when this was shared with us, there were some sub-questions. I wanna make sure I try to answer those, and if I don't, please let me know. But one was asking what the data is showing. Well, the data is showing we're going the right direction. We'd like a stronger pace, but we're going the right direction. Specifically, and I, I had the opportunity and honor to share this in a work session with our ward back at the end of June, 10.2% decrease in referrals from 23, 24 to 24, 25. While there was a 1% decrease in suspensions, keep that in mind, there was a 10.6% decrease in the total days of suspension. And I have a theory on that, and that's what it is. It's a theory. There's not enough to put a research base on it at this point. But my theory, in talking with others as well, is that the behaviors on the extreme end have been decreasing. Those are your large number of days of suspensions. And students who are making those decisions at that point when a one-to-three-day suspension is levied, they're learning. Our schools are doing more and more and more to help them reteach that behavior, to relearn. So we're not having as many repeats. I would like to think that theory is correct, and I'll keep monitoring it, and I'll be able to let you know more specifically. But the, the good news there is 10.2% decrease in referrals and 10.6% decrease in the total number of days that students were not in school because of suspension. Please don't let anyone come to you and say, that's because we're not disciplining. That's not the case. We're improving behaviors. That's the whole purpose behind discipline in and of itself, is to improve behaviors. There was also a question of how we rank among other counties. I'm not certain of how that ranking was anticipated to be relayed, but I can tell you that we're sharing our ideas with other counties, they're sharing theirs with us, and we're all learning from the best practices that have the greatest impact on improving student behavior. There was a question about policies regarding discipline in relation to any modifications needed after the 2017, January 2017 agreement, please note in air quotes, with the Department of Justice, which, much to the, the correction of any past misunderstandings, we did make some changes, some updates, some revisions in policies. We had nothing in place that wasn't the right thing to do. Our suspension policy is in accordance with the state Board of, Maryland State Department of Education. All of our policies related to student discipline are appropriate. Our code of conduct is in alignment as it should be, and where we feel that it needs to have greater depth, we've added greater depth. We went into that time period with some of the most extensive lists of interventions of systems in Maryland, and we have continued to grow that. So while DOJ was a point in time, a quite extended point in time, it, it was another step, we were going the right direction. We've continued to grow and improve from that point in time. Continuing with discipline as the focus on improving behaviors and creating a safe environment for students and for staff. Because all of these wonderful things that are happening in the instructional programs are for naught if we don't have a safe environment, and we don't have the classrooms and the hallways in the schools where students and staff wanna be. So exciting to hear what was shared earlier. Rolling into number nine, the initiatives and processes to improve discipline. This is where some of the impact is being strongest. We have expanded elementary intervention. I want you to think of a triangle, and a triangle having divided into three parts. They're not necessarily equal parts, but the broadest part, the base of the triangle, is where all students get the same access. We teach all students appropriate behaviors, we provide supports for all students, and there's that middle section, we're gonna call that tier two. Tier one being the, the tier that is for all children. Tier two, we've got some kids that that's not quite working for. So we need to amp up intervention. And we have been able to do that, introducing the ELT, Early Learning Transitions, for students in grades pre-K through two, that will be at Chipman this year. We have dedicated staff, including administration, social work, and teachers, as well as support assistants, as well as the PATH program. Please don't ask me what it stands for, but maybe Dr. Briggs knows, because his team made it up. I, I can spell it, I can't remember what the letters stand for, but I will work on that. That is very much the same thing for grades three through five, and that is being handled under the direction of East Salisbury, again, with fully dedicated staff. And additionally, remember I said there were three parts on that triangle? I didn't forget the third one, there's a tier three. When that's not working for those elementary students in pre-K through five, and those extreme behaviors, we're talking the physical behaviors, when they are continuing, an additional intervention is needed, we have contracted with SESI, Specialized Education Services, Inc., for the High Road program. We will have two classrooms where they will be supporting those students with that increased intervention. These are all intervention programs. And this is in addition to the already in place choices, which serves grades six through 12. So we continue to have these interventions, and these go into place after all the interventions that are already taking place in the school, within-school intervention, and with our student advisors, and with our counselors, and our social workers. Additionally, go back to that tier one, the base for all students. We are ensuring that Move This World program is being implemented across pre-K through 12, age-appropriate, grade-appropriate. It's character education. Think back to, as an example, the days, maybe some of you had them as students, maybe some of you had them as, just seeing them out there, but the, the values calendar, these are not values, but I mean, focusing on empathy, focusing on responsibility for self, focusing on appropriate behavior. And the resource was piloted and received very positive feedback so that it's age-appropriate if you have high schoolers in a circle talking about, you know, something that brings them together in a community-type of way, or if you have a five-minute mini lesson in an elementary classroom. The whole premise behind Move This World is, let's teach students, and we never wanna insult anyone who says, I teach my students, my child, how to behave. We're also reinforcing positive behaviors. So it's very, very important, because one of the most empowering things we can do as a school system is teach children how to be prepared to be great adults, and an age-appropriate way to approach that. So with all of that in mind, I think I'm at the end of the evening, unless you have questions.
Any questions?
All right, coming around to you next is-
Coming around to you next is our list of budget transfers. You know, like any government body, you get the fiscal year, we usually have some transfers. Most of those are typically handled at the Board of Education level. But when there are out-of-category transfers, we are required to share that with you. And we do have three and they're around things you heard us talking about already today. So the first two are to fund the purchase and setup of a four-classroom portable. This is placed at Beaver Run Elementary. If you drive by, you'll see it now at the eastern end of the building. Brand-new, looks great, painted to match the building. We'll do some landscaping around it. But that gives us four more rooms. We're not going to put pre-K out there, but it's basically to give us the capacity because of that increase in an additional grade level. And then we also have another transfer, the third one on the list, is to set up and furnish that early learning transition and PATH instructional spaces for our students who need those additional intervention services.
What, what are you going to put in those portables at Beaver Run?
That's going to be second grade.
Second grade?
Yeah.
And we're adding, as part of the original plan, there was an addition at Beaver Run. So there will be some construction there, adding that addition there for those classrooms.
Is the portable already there?
Yes.
Yeah, because somebody called me the other day and they were saying, well, they just finished the school, they got a portable. I said, no, that's not a portable. That's, they added on, they had to add on because of, you know.
Doing both. So the addition will be at the western end of the building, the portable at the eastern end. And although it does, you know, I can see it's someone from the public saying it's crazy, it's a brand-new building, but consider that the planning for that building was done back well before Blueprint was initiated. We didn't know that we were going to be adding a grade level and we had to deal with that.
Pre-K has to go somewhere.
You're never allowed to overbuild. I mean, state doesn't pay to overbuild.
You're allowed to if you guys want to fund it.
They don't give you the money to do it.
That's the big issue. You really can't plan it.
It's so, it's so complicated, you know, it's difficult. So, and that, that's, you know, that's one of our biggest hangups and that's, you mentioned Mary Beth Karos and I've really expressed that to her. Blueprint provides the funding and first, it's the initiative that we have to follow by law, which is again, great initiative. Pre-K, when you're educating students a whole year earlier and getting them ready for that important kindergarten year, great initiative. It's a game changer really, I think, in education. But even with that requirement, Blueprint, the state's only funding staffing and materials of instruction. They never put in the Blueprint any, any plans to fund the capital that it takes to add all of those classrooms. So as Brian said, when you're working on the plans and designs for Beaver Run, five years before the first steel ever goes in the ground, prior to Blueprint, and now we've had to add that whole, you know, other grade level in pre-K. So we're at least taking advantage of the residual funds there for that project and Lisa and her team very smartly had it already designed for that addition so that we could go right into that. But the, the need is now, immediately, so we have that modular there to be able to, to help do that.
You know, you're planning for more students, but you're also, we've been reading about a lot of self-deportations where people are leaving the country voluntarily, plus where, you know, the government is making people leave. Are you seeing any decrease in second language students in the county?
Currently, we've seen, and I'm looking at my team and correct me if I'm wrong, but we've seen not necessarily, what we've seen is a decrease in enrollment. Last year, you have to remember, we had over 600 stu, new students enroll with us that we didn't anticipate in one school year. About 400 or so of them were, were multilingual or English-language learners. What we're not seeing this year is that spike in enrollment like we saw last year. What we're seeing is kind of a leveling off from that.
So you've not seen a decrease in, in multi-language?
We'll see who shows up.
Yeah. We're, we're anticipating that, I think we, we were around 15,600 students last year. The year before, we were at 15,000. Last year, 15,600. We're anticipating from what our enrollment projections are, what we've seen enrolling with us over the summer, we're thinking we're going to be right around that same amount, 15,600.
Yeah.
So just, so I'm on the same page. So if we were to build another school in the future and we know that our population's growing, we could as a county say, hey, look, we want to plan for the future instead of having to do an addition and get everybody back out here again to start construction up again, maybe save some costs in the long run to build a oversized capacity school. Just, I'm just speculating here, that we could do that, I guess.
Could do that.
Overcapacity is, is all on count, local dollars then. So there are counties that do that. We haven't because that, that funding is awful hard to come by, there's lots of priorities, certainly.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you. All right. So that was end of FY25 budget transfers. And I think as Brian said, you can see here that those transfers really go into that new programming. Just put it bluntly, we're trying to work on the student discipline and behaviors that we're seeing and, and we're seeing them in our earliest grade levels. And that's where we want this additional programming to be, to be able to provide for the type of education setting that some of our students are needing to get the help and support that they need. All right.
I think this is my last topic. There's only one to go after that. So telehealth spaces in middle and high schools. So in accordance with HB 522 and Maryland Education Code 4143, you don't have to remember those, I had to look them up, but I knew there was a law. Telehealth is available to all secondary students, grades six through 12 in Wycomico County Public Schools effective 25, 26 school year. We have an excellent team working on this. We will be providing that opportunity. I'll give you a few details. There's a lot of oversight that has to happen in the school with telehealth in terms of scheduling, spacing, the technology, things of that nature. We have been fortunate enough to be able to have three additional health services team members who will float across the four high schools. We will be providing four hours per school, one day a week, for telehealth opportunities. Those are for 30-minute appointments and there's approximately a 15-minute buffer in between because I don't know if you've ever been to a doctor's appointment that goes a little bit over, but just in case, we're prepared. So for year one, this is being offered through the school-based health centers that we have. Currently, those are under the direction of local agency of Chesapeake Health and parents in all, parents' guardians in all of the secondary schools will be able to sign the necessary documents and consents for their child to receive telehealth services. Additionally, this will be for all the services that are offered through the school-based health center, even though secondary-wise, they're, the physical plant is only at Wycomico High School and we do have a setup at Wycomico Middle School. So this does not mean, and I think there may be a little bit of misinformation out there, this does not mean that any parent can set up a telehealth for their child with any doctor in town and will give them a room and a computer and let them have a telehealth appointment. That's not how it works. It has to be through this. Not to say that we don't plan to expand, but this is brand-new. We need to enter it and be solid in what we're doing to be able to move it forward with the strongest foundation. Additionally, we will continue to have multiple mental health providers in the area who have memorandums of understanding with us that allow them, with parent initiation and approval, to be able to provide therapy to their, their clients who are our students during the school day in our schools. That's been in place for six, seven, eight years at least, so we will continue that. But the telehealth part is new and we will be venturing into that. We anticipate being able to start around the middle of the first marking term and there is lots of communication planned with the families of those secondary students and working with the school administrators and providing all the necessary resources. We do have a telehealth policy embedded in our Student Health Services policy and as well, there's a procedure that will be forthcoming. So we look forward to entering this. I don't think I'm overusing the term Board of Everything because who would have thought five years ago we would have had telehealth in the schools? But if this is what we need to be able to provide in some measure to help our students be available for learning, then this is the next step that we're taking.
Questions on that? That's good information. And again, another great thing that's going to help our students, it's just a lot.
All right.
Best, best for last?
I was going to say, batting cleanup. I'm not used to batting cleanup. I was more of like a two or a three hitter, but I'll do the best I can today. It's been a long session, but a lot of good information. So coming around to you now is our Summer Athletics Newsletter, which our new athletic supervisor, Mr. Steve Romano, put together, which has a lot of information, some of which you asked for and a lot of which you did not, but it's good information nonetheless. Dr. Stalfer did a great job already of talking about our middle school program, so I want to just talk about that just a little bit. And some of that information can be on, can be found on page four. But just a reminder that we started two years ago and had enough funds to start with flag football, cross-country, volleyball, basketball, track and soccer at all of our middle schools. Thanks to Pohanka and support from the Education Foundation. We had T-shirts to identify school teams. Last year, we built on that success where we were able to purchase uniforms for all five of our middle schools. And in addition to the six initial programs, we were to add cheerleading to run concurrently with basketball. Last year, we had over 1,900 students participate. So as we look to this coming school year, a second set of uniforms are about to be purchased for each of our middle schools. This set will be more appropriate for some of our outdoor sports such as flag football and soccer. We're adding Unified Bachi to promote inclusion and hopefully engage even more student athletes, bringing our total to seven programs across the middle schools. And then now, in its third year, we'll be looking to add more consistency between the schools and organizations leading into these culminating events. All of our middle schools have reported that our programs have positively impacted student attendance, grades and discipline. We'll be working hard this year to track this data better so that the program, as we go forward, anyway. To participate in the program, just a reminder, the students must have a 2.0 GPA and are subject to the county's procedures for extracurricular activities regarding discipline. As I said, our goal for this coming year is to get over 2,000 student participants. And in addition to that, at the middle school level, we are also starting cross-country and track for this year's rising fifth-grade students. So we've grown at the elementary level and Dr. Stalfer, in his visits with all of our elementary school principals, said, what about us? We need some things at the elementary level too, to engage our students. So it's a starting point, but we're starting with cross-country and track for our fifth-grade students this coming year as well. So a lot of information, a lot of successes that we're looking to grow, build off of in the coming years as well. So I stand for any questions you might have.
These guys do a great job with all the information, all the things they're doing, but this is one of my favorite projects. It's like a pet project.
Good program.
Micah came up with, I mean, I've been to all the culminating events, I think, since it started. If you can see all the parents that turn out.
Really?
All the students that are there.
Fact.
And it stands to reason the grades are going to get better and the discipline, because you can't play if you don't adhere to the, you know, the minimum GPA and behavior, et cetera. And so if you push it down into the elementaries, it's only going to get better. It's a great, great idea that they administer.
Dr. Stalfer probably knows that one of the questions that I tabled was for middle school sports because I've been very involved with that. I was, have been very involved with the Wycomico Education Foundation from its inception, as a matter of fact. But I did it also for self-serving gratuitous reasons. I'm chairing a golf tournament.
I was unaware of that. Now I got your email.
You got my email. We're, we're going to chair, we are going to hold a golf tournament on October the 3rd at Green Hill and it is totally going to be supporting and a fundraiser for middle school sports. And being involved with the Education Foundation as I have, and the first time I remember Dr. Stalfer mentioning this and the idea of engaging students at that critical stage when they've got a path going down, a very bad path with bad choices versus being engaged and all the things that you just mentioned as far as grade point average and all that, the, it is a great, a great concept and really happy to see that making progress. Also, to also mention Pohanka and the role that they've played, especially last year getting started. So we're, our foundation is hopeful to keep that momentum moving forward and grow, grow the program.
Thank you. Now, we appreciate the support from the Education Foundation for sure. It's been a lot.
Not important, just curious. The front page of the handout, the 2,510 high school participants, the 1,099 female participants, is that, you mentioned cheer as part of this, is that included in that?
It is. We also exploring and one of the tasks that I've had, given to Mr. Romano in his new role, is also to look at different high school sports that might be more engaging specifically to our females. Flag football is growing across the country. I was actually watching it on ESPN just in the past month. So it, it's a, a different sport that some, that would be played in the fall that some of our current female athletes might be interested in. So we're looking to even grow some things at the high school level to, again, provide more opportunities for students.
It says in here, the seven sports offered per school. I know Mardele, we had to throw together co-ed teams just to be able to compete against, you know, all male teams, just so we didn't have that many people. I guess is that, or is that still an option? Does that happen?
It is.
Absolutely.
So you have, you have a golf tournament, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that Dr. Briggs was asking about it, wondering if I needed a fourth, but I'm not so sure.
You should put, you should put a team together.
Yeah, you have to hit in your own fairway, John. That's what I was told.
That's, that's why I just didn't, because, yeah. We're looking for team players to play, use the whole field.
Use the whole course, get your money's worth.
Anyway.
It's boring, John, if you're always in your own fairway.
But thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Excellent presentation.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Can a motion to adjourn to go into closed session?
Sure.
Second.